Council of Pacifica, City of Pacifica, special and regular meeting for August 24, 2020. And we have one closed session item conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation pursuant to government code section 854956.9, D2E1, one case. Do we have any public comments? I will, let's see. Any public comment for our closed session? I don't see any raised hands.
I'm not seeing any raised hands, Mayor Martin.
Okay, great. So I will close public comments and we will be back here for our 7 o'clock open session at 7 o'clock, hopefully. Thank you. 7:04 on August 24, 2020. Is there a closed session report?
No, no portable action.
Okay, let's just make sure everybody's on mute. Thank you, city attorney. Before we call to order, I'd like to read a few notes for the public. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N-25-20 and N-39-20, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act and pursuant to the order of the Health Officer of San Mateo County dated 17, 2020, as this meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business and is permitted under the orders as an essential governmental function. City council members and city staff essential to this meeting will be teleconferencing into the meeting and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can observe and participate in the meeting while sheltering at home via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by the phone and the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. Public comment. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation via Zoom. Members of the public participating by computer or smartphone using the Zoom link use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when I call on that agenda item. So raise your hand when that agenda item is called. It's important that you do that generally upfront so we can gauge how many folks are there to be able to speak and give everyone enough time. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and unmute you to talk after calling you by screen name or by the last digits of your phone number. If you're participating via Zoom and you want to raise your hand, use star nine or asterisk nine to raise your hand. You will need to know the last four digits of your phone number because that is how you will be called on to speak for your item. I will allow, people will be allowed to speak up to three minutes, but I may change that depending on how many public comments we have to make sure that we have the opportunity to hear everyone. So we'll gauge it at that time. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting. Written public comments received by 4 p.m. today will be made part of the written record and have been provided to city council prior to the meeting and posted to the city's website on the city council agenda's webpage for public reference. Email will not be monitored for public comment during this meeting. So if you wish to make a public comment and writing by 4 p.m. today, please participate via the Zoom link. Information provided in the agenda.
Zoom, Zoom issues.
I think the mayor is frozen.
Yes.
So, city clerk?
Yes.
Do you, do you have, can you conclude the mayor's remarks for her?
Sure. She's back.
So, rules of decorum, I'm back. Apologies, rules of decorum, I'm not going to go through this. Everybody just please be respectful of one another and don't, don't make us cut you off. So, thank you. I want a call to, yes. Um, oh, you haven't done the call to order? Oh, no.
I think we're moving on to roll call at this time.
Sorry, roll call.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Badalas.
Here.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Salute to the flag led by Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so I believe there is an addition to this evening's consent calendar, city attorney? Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We would like to add one matter to the consent calendar, and that deals with the ratification of a resolution, ratifying the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to extreme weather conditions due to COVID-19, as well as the dealing with the fires and requiring the temporary closure of the beaches. I believe city manager Woodhouse can give you a little more explanation on what that entailed. If not, I can move forward. I don't see the city manager here. In any event, on, on first here.
I'm here.
All right.
Thank you, Attorney Kenyon. As the council and everyone is aware, the lightning storms last weekend, early last week, have brought yet another significant disaster upon California, across California, and most closely to us, the CZU lightning complex, August Lightning Complex in Southern San Mateo County, burning a significant amount of acreage. And as last week unfolded, it was highly uncertain about where the direction of that fire was going to go, the winds, the level of evacuations necessary, the amount of emergency personnel needing to assist with evacuations, as well as battling the fires down there, which Pacifica has sent numerous strike teams as well as police officers to participate in that. So as the, as the week wore on, we learned that Half Moon Bay, who was closer to the fires and the intersection of Highway 1 and 92, based on keeping the possibility of traffic jams away from the coast, was going to make the decision to close their beaches and parking. And in order, and based on the same emergency rationale in Pacifica, heading into the uncertain weekend about those fires and evacuations, I felt it was appropriate that Pacifica do the same. And that's why we had the proclamation of local emergency related to the fires and that weather, the hot weather, as well as the order to close the beaches for the weekend. And that all occurred after the posting of this agenda on Wednesday, the 19th. And so therefore, the next, the next meeting for council consideration of ratification is tonight, and that's what brought this, is bringing this board in this emergency format.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, there are two findings that the council needs to make in order to add this to your consent calendar as item number, I believe that's, that's going to be item number 10. The first finding is that the need to take action arose after the posting of the agenda. And as you heard, this came to the attention of the city manager after the posting of the agenda, and that there is a need to take action prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting. And that finding can be made because the state law requires that after proclamation of an emergency order as the city manager issued on Friday, there is a requirement that the council ratify that order as soon as possible. And our next regularly scheduled council meeting isn't until September 14th, which is possibly three weeks away. So there's a need to take action on that tonight to ratify the order. So I would just need a motion from the council to make those two findings. We would need a two thirds, two thirds or four fifths vote of the council to add that to the agenda. So if I could get a motion from the council, we could add that to the agenda tonight. So moved.
I have a question. The last council meeting, we voted to give the city manager authority.
I'm sorry, councilmember O'Neil, before you can discuss the motion, we need a second.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, and then, that.
Okay, now, okay.
Not your question.
Yeah, last council meeting, we gave the city manager authority to be able to close the beaches in case of emergencies, et cetera. So why do, why do we need to do this if we gave the authority last meeting to, for him to have the authority?
Because this is a different emergency order. This is dealing specifically with, or more particularly with the fires. The prior order dealt solely with COVID-19 issues. This emergency deals with both COVID-19 as well as fire issues. So he needed to adopt a brand new emergency order.
Okay, could we at this point amend this to include possibly Labor Day since these fires may very well still be here Labor Day?
The city manager would have to issue another order in order to do that.
Okay, so we can't amend this? No, okay.
Because he's already, you have to ratify what he has already done, and he hasn't done that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so can we have a roll call vote to add this to the consent calendar?
Yes, so I have a motion to adopt the two findings discussed by the city attorney and add the, this item as consent calendar item number 10. Motion by Badalas, second was by Beckmeyer. And a roll call vote, I'll proceed with now. Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Badalas.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And that motion passes with a vote of five in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, now we have the consent calendar, and I am going to see if anyone on council has any comments on any of the items, would like to pull them. I do not see hand raised. Let me check for public comments on any of the items. Now would be the time, if you have question or comment on items one through 10. I see two hands raised, three hands raised for items one through 10. I will hand it over to Elizabeth Brooks, Deputy Clerk.
First here from John Leonardini, followed by Tiger Big Stick.
All right, hi. So I don't actually have the list to see what items, what through 10 on, but I just want to make a general comment about parking and closing the beaches, just anecdotally from what I see here on Rockaway Beach. Closing the beaches is not doing anything good for the congregation of out of towners coming into town. All it does is it moves the parking from the public parking lots down on the beaches up into the neighborhoods. And since we also have recreational vehicles that take up a good portion of the parking on Rockaway Beach, there's very, very little people. So honestly, on the weekend, I fear to leave my house for any reason because I will not be able to park on the beach when I come back. And it's, that's, you know, so that's my personal thing, but I hear it from up in town, you know, we're not enforcing the parking laws, so closing the beaches is just exacerbating an already bad problem. That's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And just as a reminder, those who are raising their hand would be speaking to 10, and you would get three minutes.
Next, we'll hear from Stephanie McAuliffe.
So I assume this is the appropriate time to speak to agenda item number 10? Uh, yeah, sorry, we added an agenda item number 10, sorry, it would be like nine dot, inserted 10 on consent, so that would be to the beach. Okay, I misunderstood, sorry. Public hearing, my apologies, that's a good correction. Thank you, Stephanie. I'm speaking to agenda item number 10, the appeal for the development. Okay, yeah, so, so hold off on that, and I apologize to those who think, who just raised their hand for item number 10, which is a public hearing. We added an item number 10 to consent, so now there's a little bit of confusion. And you can put your hand down if you're for the public hearing item number 10. I'll call on you when item, actual item number 10 comes up.
I still see a hand raised for Bernard Sanders.
Hello, good evening.
Hi.
Hello, I'm here to talk about, my name is Bernard Sanders, I'm here to talk about the recreational vehicles on Terranova Boulevard.
Okay, can we, oh yeah, so there's an, there's an item number, which one is this one? Sorry, commercial public, I just want to make sure that we're talking to the right one here. Madam Mayor, are you talking about item 11? Thank you. No, there's, oh, yes, it is. All right, so you're going to have to wait, Bernard, my apologies, for item number 11.
No problem.
All right, so we'll, we'll call you in a little bit. It doesn't look like any more hands raised for consent, and I know that was a little confusing, so I apologize. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar from council?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Badalas.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And the items on consent calendar, including the additional item number 10 that was added, passes with a vote of five to zero.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for your flexibility there. We have oral communications coming up. Right now is the time to talk, raise your hand if you have a comment about something that is not on the agenda this evening. We have a lot of really good stuff on the agenda tonight, so have a look at that. And if you have something that's not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Now would be the time to do it, because now is when we're making decisions as to how much time everyone's going to get. So if you have something to say that is not on the agenda this evening, raise your hand now, please. Okay.
We will hear first from Chris Redfield.
Okay, and we will get three minutes for everyone at this point.
Good evening, staff, council. I just wanted to thank Wastewater Public Works and Engineering Staff for their work to get the Anza Pump Station project completed. I had the opportunity to speak with the lead from Pump Repair Service the other day, and it looks like it's on track to get at least one pump operational by October. Good news before the rains come. I'm looking forward to the notice of completion.
Next, we'll hear from Cheryl Dickinson, followed by Suzanne Moore.
Hi there, this is Cheryl Dickinson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just, first of all, wanted to thank the city manager for closing the beaches to help facilitate the evacuations from the fires. There was, actually, I'm aware of a lot of the animals being evacuated and coming through town, so that was very helpful, I appreciate that. And in regards to fire danger, I'm actually calling in again about illegal fireworks, literally like within hours of the first fire warning, you know, the red alert that we got from the county, even before the fires got completely out of control. And every day, we've had a series of illegal fireworks going off in Lindemar West. I'm a homeowner and live in Lindemar West on Lindemar Boulevard. And as you can imagine, the community is very, like everybody, we're all on edge about fire danger. Pacifica is not exempt just because we're next to the ocean or by a creek. We're not exempt from having a major wildfire that could affect and burn down our houses. I also, you know, and many others in town have lost fire insurance against wildfires, they wouldn't even cover us. So I am, this week, I would like to suggest that the city consider working with the police department and creating a police task force to help change the way we're enforcing illegal fireworks so that we can clamp down on the people who are violating fireworks. There's all kinds of ideas that I've collected from different communities, like putting in equipment, creating tip lines, creating neighborhood watches, and several other ideas that might come up from a task force. The police do a very good job for our community. I, I love our police department, but you know, basically, they can only cite somebody if they catch them in the act. And I would like to also see them do full enforcement to the extent of the law, thousand dollar fines and arrest. So I appreciate your consideration for creating a fire, illegal fireworks task force. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now hear from Suzanne Moore.
Suzanne Moore. San Mateo County's eviction moratorium for tenants impacted by COVID-19 expires at the end of August. Somehow, our supervisors chose to leave on recess without extending protection an additional month while the state debates long-term just economic recovery for both tenants and property owners. The consequences of evictions at this time would be devastating. San Mateo County continues to be on the state's watch list with markers for removal still unmet, and a second wave of COVID is expected this fall with the flu season. According to a survey by our county's core service agencies, which includes the Pacifica Resource Center, fully 46% of residents laid off have been unable to return to work, with an additional 14% only able to return part-time. Approximately 71% of those surveyed were ineligible for unemployment. People are unable to pay rents and mortgages. This means, according to the Bay Area Equity Atlas, that nearly 7,000 households in San Mateo are at imminent risk for eviction, including over 4,000 children. Evictions and foreclosures of this magnitude and the economic downturn of this pandemic would financially cripple many and increase the spread of COVID-19. There is still time to persuade our supervisors. Call or email the next two days to request a special session before August 31st and extend the eviction moratorium through September. Assembly member David Chu described the monumental need to fight for our neighbors, frontline workers, and families at this time of economic downturn and COVID spread. Chu stated it is a moral crisis of our day. Our entire community benefits by keeping our neighbors housed at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Next, we'll hear from Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jazz Twirl's Big Stick of Pacifica. As a result of taking a next step forward into a more public arena, I wanted to make clear that I'm going to be stepping down for the time being from the Board of Directors of the Pacifica Resource Center. I have proudly been serving on this board for the last five years of my life and proudly serving as the Vice President of the Board for the last two years of my life. And while, again, I'm moving into a slightly more public area of discourse, and we, I thought it prudent to remove myself from any doubt, and so I'm taking a leave of absence from the board for the time being. And that'll, I'll be back on the board starting November 4th. So, that having been said, I also wanted to take a moment to say thank you on behalf of not just myself, but my coworkers at one of the three big employers in Pacifica. And we're all considered essential workers during this time. And on behalf of us, I wanted to say thank you for closing down the public beaches over the course of the weekend. I appreciate that it makes it a lot easier in case a worst-case scenario happens and people need to be evacuated. And on a personal slash professional level, it's difficult every weekend to have that many people come in from out of town, many of whom are not respecting the mask ordinance. And, you know, even in town, I'm sure there's a handful of people who could be more respectful of that mask ordinance. It makes it a lot easier not to have to play police officer while we're not hired to be police officers when we don't have to worry about that much as much. And we thank you for facilitating that while simultaneously facilitating the ability for people if there is a worst-case scenario due to the fires. So thank you.
Ms. Tiger.
Next, we'll hear from Anita Reese.
Hello, this is Anita Reese.
Hello, this is, uh, Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center, and I want to thank again the city and the community for your ongoing support while we continue to respond to COVID and its impact on Pacifica residents. We are planning to be of support for our neighbors south of us, uh, in case they need it, especially the core agencies, our sister agencies as well. So, our office, um, as I've mentioned before, continues to be open to the community. Uh, we are closed to visitors Monday and Tuesday afternoons, Wednesday and Thursday mornings, and we continue to have our regular Friday office hours. So, but when our office is closed to visitors, we are available by phone only. I wanted to give you an update that we distributed over a hundred and twenty-two backpack, a hundred and twenty-two backpacks through our back-to-school program. We provided backpacks, headphones, hand sanitizer, face masks, and a Target gift card so that they could purchase, families could purchase the school supplies they needed when they needed them. And if anybody still needs help for school, please have them contact PRC by phone, email, or our website. Groceries continue to be delivered to seniors and at-risk families bi-monthly. Others needing groceries are encouraged to attend our drive-through distribution on Wednesdays in the parking lot at the American Legion Hall, which is at 555 Fuel. If folks are already signed up, they have a distribution time. Otherwise, we ask folks to come at 3:30, and we'll get them in and out as quickly as possible. Um, as you've heard already, the eviction moratorium ends on August 28th, so if anybody needs help paying their September rent or their past due rent, please contact PRC. We have an online application to make it easier for us to collect the most important documents and to apply, so contact us and we can get you the link to do that, or we can schedule a time for you to come in when the office is open. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, we've hired two of our, our two unhoused on the coast or UC outreach specialists. They've been with us for two weeks and started outreach to those impacted by the oversized vehicle ordinance last week, once we learned that the ordinance was being implemented. We'll continue to conduct outreach daily in Pacifica to educate folks and offer our services. Um, and in the next couple of weeks, we'll also expand our, our outreach to, um, south of the coast at some point, given everything that's happening south of us. Um, lastly, just as a reminder, the deadline to complete the census is on September 30th, and all online, phone, and mail response options will end as of that date. Enumerators have already started reaching out to folks in person who haven't completed the census, so go to my2020census.gov to complete. Um, if you need help, you can contact PRC either for the census, financial assistance for rent or mortgage by calling us at 650-738-7470, or reaching out to us via our website, pacresourcecenter.org.
Thank you, Anita. Okay, I don't see any more hands for orals. I will close oral communication and move to council communication. Raise your hand physically, I can see everyone. They didn't. They. You're still on, you didn't mute yourself. Uh, let's see, any council members have anything?
Yeah.
No, Mike, uh, Sue Beckmeyer.
I, uh, attended the Economic Development Committee meeting, um, on the 11, and we continued discussing outreach to local businesses regarding outdoor operations and making sure that, um, businesses are aware of the commercial eviction moratorium and different strategies and, uh, methods for continuing outreach in those regards. Um, we also heard an update from the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce, including, uh, the launch of a fantastic new website that promotes Pacifica that I encourage everyone to take a look at called visitpacifica.org. Visitpacifica.org. Um, I listened to a meeting, or attended, I guess, a meeting on the Sharp Park specific plan, which seemed to have some good engagement, um, lots of good comments, and I think a lot of observers. Uh, so it's, it's helpful to know that that information is getting out to the community, even though we're in a not meet-in-person, um, place right now. Uh, I think that's all.
Thank you. Uh, Sue Vatterlas?
I went to a webcast on evictions because I can see that we may have some evictions coming up, and it was interesting about what to do. Um, the Sharp Park specific plan, I met with Verizon about their installation of towers. Um, the Democrats went over every proposition that's on the ballot, which is always an interesting meeting. Um, the COVID weekly call, um, I attended the coastal cities, um, regarding sea level rise for the, uh, League of California Cities. Uh, the cities who spoke weren't as far along as we are, so it wasn't, it wasn't that worthwhile. Um, if you want to sign up for any commissions or committees, the deadline has been extended, I believe, till the 28th, if someone could clarify that. Um, so go to the City of Pacifica to sign up to be on commissions. Also, I read today that the City of Pacifica is the 21st safest city in California. So that was a really good thing to read. Um, and on my list, I have fireworks. I am also, like Cheryl, tired of hearing fireworks, um, at all times, and they're called illegal fireworks. They're illegal. I ask people if they could see who was setting them off. No one can. So if you can't see them being set off, how, um, is the police department supposed to find people setting off illegal fireworks? They shoot them up in the air, so no one can actually see where they came from. It's a problem. This is fire season. People just don't set off any fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Sue.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for participating in, in this meeting tonight. I appreciate everybody being here. Um, I attended the Housing Our People Effectively, um, meeting, which is an inter-agency meeting, um, where people come together to talk about how they're, how they're dealing with homelessness and, um, just across the, the county. So that was, it was a really good meeting. You know, I think I, one thing I really want to talk about tonight is, um, the fire, and I've gotten a lot of requests for evacuation plans and safety plans and what that means for our city. So, um, Captain Clement sent me some information. Thank you, Captain Clement. I appreciate that very much, and I thought I would just read it for you. I know, for me personally, it was really important for me to get on the same page with my adult children and have a plan in place and have a bag ready to be packed to go. And so, one of the most important aspects of any type of emergency planning includes evacuation planning for community members is awareness and prep, prep, preparedness. This begins with being aware of wildfire risks where you live or work, having a family emergency plan, and knowing where to get information about fire conditions or other hazards and any planned evacuation. So it's so important, not just with your families, but with your community, like, like, talk to your neighbors, have a plan on your block, get to know your neighbors so that you can all be on the same page and help each other. Um, there's a lot of different resources on different social media platforms. Um, there's SMC Alert. Please, please, um, go to that, go there and, and put your, your email in so that you can get all the alerts for the system of Samatyo County. Um, the wildfire preparedness information is available on the North County Fire Authority website, and you can find current information about active wildfires on the Samatyo County wildfire response webpage. And a lot of the information was also in Friday's Connect with Pacifica, so thank you for including that information and Connect with Pacifica. The police department disaster preparedness website includes useful links to SMC Ready, um, CalOES, Know Your Hazard webpage, so there's a lot of different resources out there. Please make sure that, that you're checking them all out and doing what you need to do for your family. Um, it's scary. Things are scary right now, and, um, we just really need to be prepared, and we need to take care of each other, right? Because that's the most important thing that we can do. Um, I am concerned about the residential, um, eviction moratorium, and so I'm wondering if there would be, um, interest from this council to do an emergency residential, um, eviction moratorium?
I'm just throwing that out. Well, we, we, we could not deliberate or discuss that tonight because that's not on the agenda, but if you would like to ask the city manager to place that on a future agenda, or to consider a special meeting perhaps to consider that, we could do that.
I would like to do that. And that's it for me tonight, so thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Um, okay, so my turn. A few business items. I don't know if anyone noticed, but, um, Recology has, uh, really worked very closely with the City of Pacifica to work on our, um, uptick in, uh, garbage, uh, because everybody is gagging to get out of the house. They come and recreate here in Pacifica, and we have a lot of garbage now. Also, they work with the restaurants, so you'll see a, um, an extra dumpster down at, uh, Lindemar Beach, and that allows, uh, the folks who pick up the can, the, the garbage cans to not to sit in traffic when they need to get around to different places. They can drop it right there and not have to go all the way up to the yard to drop it and then come back. So, um, that's very helpful. So, thank you to Recology. In that same vein, uh, the Pacific Beach Coalition is charging hard on their Street to Beach campaign. If you are, um, a regular or wanting to be a regular of our monthly cleanups, um, we, while we are not hosting them, you can go out and do your own. It's really cool. There's a Clean Swell app, and if you ever get the opportunity to check out the website, you'll see that people are logging their stuff all over California, um, as representatives of Pacific Beach Coalition. So, uh, check that out. Uh, I met with the, um, uh, community group of North Pacificans, and we talked about our policing policies and a little bit more about the Obama pledge, and that is a reminder that tomorrow night, we have a special meeting, uh, to talk about policing that begins at 6:30, I believe. Um, for, uh, okay, it's, there's a lot going on about the implementation of our oversized vehicle, uh, ordinance now. Uh, there's an uptick in folks getting kicked out of Pacifica or, um, trying to find a place to stay. So, we all need to be a little bit, uh, patient and understanding, and, um, uh, you know, I, I wish we had a safe parking program, uh, to help these folks, but, um, I am very thankful for the Pacific, Pacifica Resource Center that is reaching out to folks ahead of time and, and doing some proactive engagement to help those folks. Um, if, if, if that weren't enough, we've got a pandemic that we're working on, and I know that there's a ton of, um, estheticians and body workers that really are, um, you know, gagging to get back to work, and while they operate in very sanitary conditions on a regular basis, they're even more so now. So, um, we, I will continue to urge our, um, our county to see what we can do in terms of, um, loosening those restrictions, even though we are still on the watch list. Uh, okay. Thank you to everyone in Pacifica for, um, staying home this weekend. Uh, we, it was a last-minute decision, but we needed to keep our highways clear. I wish everyone in the rest of the Bay Area, uh, were on this call because those are the folks that we really need to reach, uh, in order to, you know, this weekend was really about keeping Highway One clear, and it was because our first responders, um, and evacuees needed to get down, um, back and forth, uh, you know, on Highway One. So, I want to thank you to all of you Pacificans who rearranged your weekend around that. I know I did. I canceled my children's swim, and, um, and so I, I know that people are doing that. And further to that, I want to thank our first responders, our firefighters, our EMTs. I saw some crazy footage of one of our local firefighters that I just, I'm like, this is your real-life superheroes. Like, like, literally, they live next door to us, and I'm so thankful and, um, and, and proud of you all, so thank you. And school started, and you, our teachers are also heroes. I, I can't imagine how they had to turn on a dime, uh, in, in March last year, and now that they spent their entire vacation planning on how they're going to transition, and, and they're doing, going above and beyond. And I'm just so thankful for every single teacher out there, and I want you to know that it's not just me. Everyone is thankful for you. You may not feel it, but I'm asking all you parents to just, um, be a little patient because all the teachers are learning, and so are we. And the answers may not be there right away, but if we have a little patience, we'll get there together. Um, and then I did hear something about, uh, folks not wearing their masks and things like that. I just want to remind everyone, please don't play, uh, police officer. Uh, just, um, wear your mask. And, um, with that, I, I don't have anything more to say. I will, oh, Sue Beckmeyer?
Sorry, I'm, I knew I'd forgotten something. Um, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge something we received yesterday. I think it was, um, congratulating the Pacifica Resource Center and Anita Reese, the Executive Director, for being named, um, one of California's Nonprofits of the Year for 2020, um, nominated by Senator Jerry Hill. And it's a, a great, um, recognition of the work that they do, and, and I would just like to join in hearty congratulations to them, and thanks to them for the work that they continue to do in our community.
We're here. Mary? Okay. Um, uh, oh, and one more thing is, I wanted to thank the Parks, Beach, and Recreation Commission and also Director, uh, Mike Perez for working on the nonprofit, um, status for surf camps. I know it's still, you're still working on it, but it looks like there's a super positive movement going forward, so thank you for making, uh, time for that. Okay, we will move on to staff communications. The manager?
Great, thank you, Mayor Martin and Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. Uh, a few communications. Uh, first, I just wanted to clarify a, a couple items. One, uh, the question was asked about the extensions for the recruitments for the committees and commissions. So, that deadline is Wednesday, the tw- of this week, the 26th, for the, um, Economic Development Committee, Parks, Beach, and Recreation, um, uh, Commission and, and the, uh, Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee. So those have been extended to this Wednesday from Friday. Um, and then the, tomorrow night's policing in Pacifica meeting begins at six o'clock, and the, uh, report is on the agenda, so we're looking forward to that conversation and presenting the, the work that we've done, the analysis we've done, and the recommended, uh, path moving forward. So again, that's 6:00 PM tomorrow night, uh, Zoom. The agenda is, uh, on the city's website. I wanted to, uh, switch gears a little bit and, and just, uh, uh, announce that, uh, the Monterey Road paving project, this is our fiscal year 2019-20 paving project, has been underway. The work on the sidewalks rehabilitation is wrapping up, and the, uh, actual two inches of new asphalt, uh, work will, uh, start the week of August 31st, anticipated to be completed mid-September with the striping of the road, uh, to be completed by October. So that project is moving along. If you live in that vicinity or drive that area, you, uh, maybe have seen the sidewalk work, and now you'll see the actual street paving work. So we're, we're excited when we, uh, lay down additional asphalt. Um, and, uh, I wanted to just comment briefly about the census. It was, it was mentioned, and, and actually, uh, Pacifica is, uh, Pacificans are rocking the census. We're doing great. Uh, I think we have an eighty-one percent response rate. It's the, uh, I believe, the, the twentieth highest for cities in our sort of size in the state. However, there's a statewide competition occurring, and we can do better, and we can win that competition. So please, everyone you know, encourage them to complete the census if they have not, because, uh, we want to win that recognition from the state. That's not why. The reason why is because it's really important for us to garner local funding, uh, to Pacifica. That's the importance of the census. But recognition and awards, we like that too. So, uh, we're doing a great job. Let's keep that up. And I'll, uh, end my comments at that.
Great, thanks, City Manager. Uh, we will move on to our public hearing. Uh, this is item number 10, folks, so the, uh, the famous, uh, number 10. Consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval with conditions of site development permit PSD 788-14 Heritage Tree Removal. with conditions of site development permit PSD 788-14 Heritage Tree Removal Authorization and Logging Operation Approval File by Javier Diaz Macias for construction of a new three-story, approximately 3,800 square foot single-family residence with attached 787 square foot three-car garage on an undeveloped 38,765,000 square foot lot situated along the unimproved public right-of-way, Oddstat, located approximately 275 feet southwest of the intersection of Rockaway Beach Avenue and Bayview Road. You can read the APNs in the agenda and construction of an approximately 360-foot street and utilities extension and adoption of an initial study mitigated negative deck and mitigation monitoring and reporting program in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act File Number 2014-001. So we will go ahead and hear from Christian Murdock. Is that right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if there are any ex parte communications for the council to disclose?
Yeah, thanks for that reminder. Anyone?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. I spoke with six residents from Rockaway Beach.
I also spoke to several different residents and visited the site today.
Okay, Sue Beckmeyer?
I spoke with two residents, including the appellant.
Okay. Sue Varlos?
I spoke with no one.
Okay, I spoke with several of the residents as well. All right, thank you, City Planner Christian Murdock.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Senior Planner Christian Murdock. I'm joined this evening by our staff team, which includes Rod Stinson and Nick Papani from Rainy Planning and Management, the city's SEQA consultant. We also have Planning Commissioner Samantha Hauser as the Planning Commission liaison. The item before you involves consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's adoption of an initial study mitigated negative declaration, or ISMND, for the environmental review of the proposed project, as well as approval of a site development permit, heritage tree removal authorization, and logging operation approval to allow construction of a street and utilities extension and a new single-family residence. I'll start with an overview of the project and then address the issues raised in the appeal. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. The project has requested a site development permit, heritage tree removal authorization, and logging operation approval. These generally are described in the project documents as the discretionary permits or the development permits. The environmental review for the project included an initial study and mitigated negative declaration to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. Next slide. The project's site has a general plan land use designation of very low-density residential and a zoning classification of R1H, single-family residential hillside. The site is not located within the Hillside Preservation District or HPD. You can see from the slide that the area outlined in blue is the Oddstat Way Public Right-of-Way or the Paper Street, and it is proposed to be improved with a street of 26 feet in width. The street improvements would provide access to the project site, which is outlined in the yellow dashed symbology here. And the actual area of development is roughly the red highlighted area. The project site in total, the yellow dashed area, is 38,765 square feet, or 0.89 acres. And the project is actually comprised of lots 4 through 12 of Block 25 of the Rockaway Beach subdivision number one. Next slide, please. This is a sheet from the project plans, which shows the end of the existing improved section of Oddstat Way, which is shown in the bottom left of this drawing. And then the various improvements proposed in the applicant's plans for the street and stormwater infrastructure, as well as the project driveway and fire apparatus turnaround. The project site is located in the Rockaway Beach neighborhood, as we know, on an unimproved 40-foot wide public right-of-way. Unimproved rights-of-way are sometimes called paper streets. The project area was first subdivided in 1908, and this subdivision created all of the public rights-of-way in this area, including Rockaway Beach Avenue, Bayview Road, Oddstat Way, and other streets in the Rockaway Beach neighborhood. Since the original subdivision of this area, most development has occurred along Rockaway Beach Avenue and Bayview Road, while most of Oddstat Way has remained undeveloped. However, this is not the first extension of Oddstat Way. And three single-family residences, which have addresses on Rockaway Beach Avenue, house numbers 560, 598, and 600, are actually constructed on Oddstat Way. The proposed street extension shown on this slide would be approximately 360 feet in length. And as I noted, the Planning Commission conditioned the street extension to be 26 feet wide in accordance with city administrative policy. The street would generally run southeast of the current end of the spur of Oddstat Way off of Rockaway Beach Avenue. The street extension would include all utilities required for the project and would include public facilities such as curb, gutter, and bioretention treatment facilities to manage stormwater discharges from the project. The applicant has designed the project so that the post-development stormwater discharges are actually less than the pre-development stormwater discharges. And they've done this through a series of detention pipes, stormwater treatment, weirs, and bioretention areas, as well as pervious paving. All stormwater from the project, as conditioned, would be treated by infiltration through an engineered soil mix to reduce pollutants before discharging on the downstream side of the culvert and bridge currently used to cross Rockaway Creek. The street extension, as I noted previously, would also include a fire apparatus turnaround along the project frontage, a requirement because of the dead-end configuration of this street extension. The street extension would provide access to the project site where the single-family residence is proposed. The very low-density residential land use designation in the general plan calls for a minimum density of 0.5 acres and up to two acres of land per dwelling unit. This project is situated roughly in the middle of that and would comply with the general plan land use density regulations. The city, as I noted, merged these lots into a single lot, lots 4 through 12, in 2019. And as a result, only one primary residence could be constructed on the site under the zoning. Next slide, please. The proposed improvements for the site would include a single-family residence of approximately 3,800 square feet in area, which would have one story of garage area and two stories of residential area, and would measure 34 feet 8 inches in height. The project would have an 8.7% lot coverage, well below the 40% maximum, and 80.9% landscaping, which is well above the 20% minimum. The project would also exceed minimum setbacks in the front, sides, and rear. Next slide, please. The project has a rustic aesthetic with the dominant architectural material consisting of natural-toned wood siding complemented by stacked stone. The project would include ample patio and balcony spaces for outdoor enjoyment and would incorporate all heritage trees on the site into the extensive proposed landscaping. The outdoor patio areas would be created in part by construction of retaining walls, mostly at the rear of the site, in order to create level outdoor space through the site's steep average slope of 34.9%. Next slide, please. The project would include removal of heritage and non-heritage trees to enable construction of the street extension and single-family residence. The project would incorporate all heritage trees existing on lots 4 through 12 into the site landscaping. The project previously had proposed to remove five heritage trees, but after staff suggested some modifications to the project, which the applicant accepted, we were able to preserve all of the heritage trees on the actual development site. Heritage tree removal at this point would be limited to three heritage trees in the Oddstat Way Public Right-of-Way only as part of the street construction. We have not identified a way to design the street to preserve those three heritage trees, unfortunately. Removal of non-heritage trees would be limited to the area needed to construct the single-family residence and street extension. Next slide, please. To evaluate the environmental impacts of the proposed project under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, staff prepared an ISMND. The project evaluated in the ISMND was actually larger and more expansive than the project proposed this evening. Of note, it included a 518-square-foot detached recreation room atop the slope at the rear of the project site, and an additional outdoor yard area of more than 1,000 square feet in size to the east of the single-family residence, both of which required construction of additional extensive retaining walls, in which involved additional excavation on the site. Next slide, please. The applicant has since revised the project to eliminate these components, which has resulted in a project which is less impactful than that evaluated in the ISMND. The yard area that you see here is currently proposed with the project, but there's an area located behind this field of view, which actually will retain its existing undeveloped character. These revisions proposed by the applicant, in particular, reduced the amount of grading by 653 cubic yards of net cut, which is a 27% reduction in the overall project grading, which would lead to a reduction in approximately 87 dump truck trips from the project. Those trips, which were evaluated in the project's traffic impact analysis, would no longer occur. And even with the trips at the larger project, the city's analysis did not find any significant traffic impacts. Staff's analysis in the ISMND identified potentially significant environmental impacts to aesthetics, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, transportation and circulation, and tribal cultural resources. Based on substantial evidence in the record, staff was able to develop a mitigation measure or measures which would reduce each potential impact to a less-than-significant level. The mitigation measures identified in the ISMND are included in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP. Compliance with the MMRP is a condition of approval. Preparation of the ISMND followed all applicable laws governing public review and comment. Staff exceeded the requirements of state law by preparing a response to all comments received on the ISMND. Staff received a number of public comments on this project, some of which have been included in the agenda packet, rather, all of which have been included in the agenda packet, and some received after agenda packet publication, most recently were published on the city's website this evening. The comments received after agenda packet publication were made available for public review, as noted on the city's website. Staff's evaluation of the proposed project supports a finding that, as mitigated, all potentially significant environmental impacts can be reduced to less-than-significant levels, and that, as conditioned, there is evidence to support all required findings for project approval of a site development permit, heritage tree removal authorization, and logging operation. Therefore, staff recommends adopting the resolution attached to the staff report to deny the appeal and approve the project. Next slide, please. So major items for the city council to consider. This is a smaller project than evaluated under SEQA, with fewer impacts, and even the larger project was found to have less-than-significant impacts as mitigated. The project is part of an existing subdivision from 1908, and in fact, has reduced development potential from the prior condition in that all nine lots comprising the project site have been merged into a single lot. The project complies with general plan density standards, in that it has more than a half acre of lot area. It complies with all zoning standards, with no exceptions requested by the applicant. The project would remove three heritage trees on the street extension only. All heritage trees on the private lot are to be preserved. And the tree removal would occur, other tree removal would occur only where needed to build the project and would preserve large numbers of non-heritage trees. Next slide, please. An appeal of the Planning Commission's approval was filed on June 25, 2020 by Christine Kopalov. The appeal form stating the basis for appeal is attachment K to the staff report, and it begins on packet page 787. Numerous bases for appeal, more than 40 in the initial appeal, were provided by the applicant. The applicant further, or the appellant, rather, more than 40 bases of appeal from the appellant in the initial appeal. The appellant further submitted a letter and biological report on August 20, and submitted two additional documents today on August 24. City staff has reviewed all of these documents and does not believe there's any evidence to change city staff's conclusions in evaluation of the project, including the ISMND, to comply with SEQA. Next slide. Staff has already responded comprehensively to the issues in the initial appeal in the staff report. No further analysis or responses to those issues are required. Next slide. The appellant's letter submitted on August 20 raised numerous issues which were not stated or expanded upon those issues as they were stated in the initial appeal. Staff has done its best to respond to those issues in the time provided, given the late submission of the appellant's letter on August 20. I've outlined the key issues raised in that letter here, beginning with impacts on biological resources. They claim an inaccurate baseline. Environmental conditions may continuously change, especially for biological resources. Species move, plants grow, birds come to areas. It's impossible to have a baseline reflect the existing conditions at the exact moment that the decision-making body is considering the project. The city's ISMND appropriately established a point in time to establish the baseline. The city performed a peer review of the applicant's project biologist's biological resources assessment that was not reflected in the information that was submitted on August 20. The peer review was performed by Live Oak Associates in June of 2017, and that professional qualified expert concurred with most of the findings of the WRA Biological Resources Assessment. And where there was disagreement, they were either addressed by mitigation measure or further analysis. Appropriate mitigation measures, in any case, were put in place to protect biological resources, including birds, bats, butterflies, and others. And it's unclear from the information submitted how a different baseline would support different conclusions or mitigation measures. Another claim in the letter was that the project would have an impact on wildlife movement. The analysis by Dr. Smallwood erroneously concludes the project would block wildlife movement, but ignores the context, the broader context of the project site, which is a large undeveloped parcel to the south of the project site, a minimum of 120 feet wide. And so therefore, we do not believe the project in any way would interfere substantially, which is the appropriate threshold in this case, with the species listed in SEQA guidelines, Appendix G. The August 20 letter claims significant window collisions from birds would occur, but it's, there's no evidence to support the claim that the vast majority of bird deaths would occur among migratory Bird Treaty Act species or other special status species. Furthermore, there's no evidence of how significant glare from glass would occur at the project site, which is bordered at the south by a high-sloped ridge line and would be substantially surrounded by trees on all sides. The letter also claimed a loss of bird reproductive capacity. Dr. Smallwood erroneously overcalculates the loss of habitat, which results in an erroneous and incorrect calculation of estimated nests in the project vicinity and overstates the potential impacts according to his analysis. There's no evidence that upon implementation of mitigation measure IV-1, that there would be any impact to reduce bird reproductive capacity in this instance. Additionally, there's no evidence that the number of birds affected, if any, would constitute a significant impact. The numbers provided in isolation without consideration or evidence of the broader context of the number of species or how it would affect their reproductive ability. Next slide, please. The letter also raises issues related to water quality, claiming the project would not comply comply with applicable water quality standards. It references a statement from the ISMND on page 68, which is taken out of context. That page and that statement, which is quoted, is actually summarizing the applicant's inadequate C3 plan, which, upon peer review and mitigation, with mitigation measure IX-4, would address the deficiency of the applicant's analysis by requiring treatment of all stormwater discharges pursuant to the municipal regional permit, or MRP, Section C3, including Drainage Management Area DMA-R2. And the treatment of DMA-R2 would be provided in accordance with C3 Technical Design Standards, which are contained in a published manual, which the city is obligated to comply with, under the MRP. Traffic, the letter raises claims related to traffic and claims that the traffic analysis prepared for the project failed to acknowledge Level of Service, or LOSF, at Highway One and Fassler Avenue. That's factually incorrect. The ISMND did not identify LOSF operating conditions, but nevertheless analyzed a worst-case LOSF scenario and did not identify significant impacts from project traffic. The letter also raised claims related to cumulative impacts, including that the ISMND failed to analyze development of the westerly lots to assess impacts to biological resources. The ISMND explains how such an analysis would be speculative as potential biological resource impacts are location-specific and project-specific, and the locations of the development on the westerly lots cannot be known at this time and therefore cannot be adequately evaluated at a project level. The letter also claims that the ISMND failed to analyze growth-inducing impacts. However, the letter incorrectly cites SEQA Guidelines, Section 15126.2E, which is not applicable because an EIR or environmental impact report is not required. The correct citation is to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15071, which contains the required elements for mitigated negative declaration. The ISMND also analyzes cumulative impacts from reasonably foreseeable development of those lots receiving a connection to the street and utilities extension for the westerly lots only. The rationale for that analysis, which is reasonable and based on substantial evidence related to the project, reasonably concludes that the westerly lots only are foreseeable to develop as a result of the project. to develop as a result of the project. Other rationales for analyzing cumulative impacts are speculative, including any analysis of the easterly lots or lots to the east of the eastern lots. The letter also claims significant cumulative land use impacts would occur from future general plan amendments on the westerly lots. The ISM and D concluded that the city may reasonably approve general plan amendments for the westerly lots to authorize their development, and as a result, included them in the cumulative impacts analysis for the project. However, the city council's approval of any future general plan amendments is not guaranteed and therefore is speculative. In any case, the reasoning of the argument in the letter is flawed in that a city council approval of land use designation changes would not result in the alleged conflict with an adopted general plan because it would lawfully change the general plan. Next slide, please. The additional bases submitted by the appellant today on August 24th generally fell into three categories: removing barriers and inducing growth, traffic in the 1980 general plan, and the biological resource assessments prepared by Dr. Smallwood. These issues have already been addressed in the staff report, the ISM and D, or in prior responses in this presentation. Next slide. But specific to those points, I want to indicate that with respect to removing barriers and inducing growth from the August 24th letter, there is a factually incorrect statement that an application has been submitted for three easterly lots. That is not the case. The city does not have any such application. As indicated in the ISM and D, the city does have an incomplete application for development of three of the westerly lots. With respect to traffic in the 1980 general plan, as noted earlier, even under a worst-case LOSF scenario as analyzed in the ISM and D, there would be no significant impacts from traffic related to the project. Next slide. Actually, a previous slide. Please go back. At this point, I want to give an opportunity to our SEQA consultants from Rainey Planning and Management, Rod Stinson and Nick Papani, to offer any further analysis or explanation with respect to the SEQA analysis for the project.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Excellent. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Nick Papani, Vice President with Rainey Planning and Management. Christian, you did a great job of covering generally the points raised in the August 20th letter and Smallwood's attachment. I might just hit a couple things. First thing I want to point out, this is raised in the cover letter, is that the claim that the bio report is inadequate, in part because there was not a description of how specifically the surveys were conducted. Certainly, that's not a reason to conclude the surveys were inadequate. The methodology section does include details that they walked the site searching for suitable habitats, which is standard industry practice. So there's no reason, just based on a simple contention that there's not a detailed description of the survey details that somehow the report is thus inadequate. There's a statement that the report did not, the report prepared for the SEQA document did not adequately identify the full range of potential species that could occur on site. The cover letter indicates that Smallwood concludes that 46 special status species could be impacted by the project. If one was to read the Smallwood letter, you'll find that that's actually a misstatement. Smallwood says that there are 46 special status species that could potentially use the site, at least on occasion. So even he is not saying that they could be potentially impacted significantly by the project. And on closer scrutiny, of course, I won't take all the time here to do so, but there's problems with the list of potential species in Smallwood's table. For example, Voxus swift is a small bird that has no records within San Mateo County. I did a search of the California Natural Diversity Database maintained by the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. There are no records of nesting Voxus swift. Similarly, he calls out American badger. The most recent record for badgers from 1948, and it's over two miles from the project site. So there's various reasons that the WRA consultant utilized to dismiss certain species from potentially occurring on site. And upon closer scrutiny, we can show how the range of species that WRA determine could be on site. I'd also point out that the pre-construction surveys that are requirements in the SEQA document ensure that no adverse impacts would occur to species. The, Smallwood makes a contention that pre-construction surveys are not adequate. They would only detect a small subset of potential nesting birds. I have personally performed pre-construction surveys for projects, and there's other ways to identify nesting birds, not just by sight. You can look for nesting behaviors and so forth of birds so that you can queue in to potential species nesting on site. Pre-construction surveys are adequate to ensure that special status species on site would not be adversely impacted. I'd also make a point that a number of the special status species identified by Smallwood are those that inhabit riparian habitat, which though proximate to the site, this project would not impact riparian habitat. So that's an important consideration as well. The impacts would occur outside of the riparian habitat. I think, Christian, you covered the other components in terms of wildlife movements. Obviously, the primary movement areas are outside of this site area. That's within the Sweeney Ridge area of the Golden Gate National Recreation component, not this site. While animals may move through this site, there's no reason why they could not continue to do so, though the primary movement areas are and will remain east of the site. You addressed window collisions, reproductive capacity. I might make the point that there's no requirement to offset every bit of impact to habitats. There's no nexus to do that. The threshold is impacting a species such that it could drop below a self-sustaining level. And there's no substantial evidence to support that the very little amount of habitat impact that's occurring here would result in special status species dropping below a self-sustaining level. And that's really the SEQA requirement we have to look at, not just whether any little portion of habitat would be impacted. With that, I think I'll conclude and turn it back over to you and of course, be available for questions at any point throughout tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Nick, for that very helpful supplement. I just want to touch on maybe one further point raised in the August 20th information submitted by the appellant. And that's a claim that the mitigation measures for some of the potential significant impacts were improperly deferred. I think staff disagrees with that. There's no substantial evidence to support that. The claim was made with respect to at least two potential impacts, one being water quality from stormwater discharges. As I mentioned in my presentation already, there is a mitigation measure to require a revision to the applicant's plan and specifically to treat DMA-R2, which is the drainage management area, not identified for treatment in the applicant's proposal. That would be designed to be treated in accordance with the C3 technical guidance, which is a required design standard with performance standards in the city's municipal regional permit. And then lastly, with respect to potential wetlands impacts, which are not guaranteed, but any potential impacts would be required to be mitigated with specific performance standards, as noted in the mitigation measure, as well as to incorporate and to fulfill any permit requirements by the applicable resource agencies, including the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, as well as the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Next slide, please. So with that said, the city staff's recommendation is to take the recommended action, which is shown in the agenda packet, to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's adoption of the ISM and D and approval of the project, incorporating certain information in the record by adopting the attached resolution. Next slide. Staff is here to answer any additional questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. So now we will have, does any council members have questions for staff? Sue Vadois?
This isn't a question. I remember that I did talk to one of the community members several weeks ago, and we were mainly talking about Rockaway Beach Avenue. So, sorry, I did forget that I talked to someone about it.
Okay, thank you. So now would be a good time to ask any questions that we have about the report that we just received. And if known as any questions, then we would invite the appellant to speak. Mary? And then Sue Beckmeyer? Oh, you're on mute, Mary.
Sue, go ahead. I'll go after you.
Okay. One question that I have immediately is in response to Mr. Papani's statement a minute ago about that this is not a riparian area. I can't find you on the grid. There you are. And I need you to clarify that for me because I know there is a creek. And I think I assumed riparian is where there's water and all of the habitat in that area. So can you please characterize for me the difference between the creek that is near this project site and what you define and is appropriately defined as a riparian area?
Yeah, absolutely. Good question. Again, Nick Papani with Rainey. So to clarify, there is riparian habitat that is proximate to the project site. The point I was trying to emphasize was that that official riparian habitat that's associated with the creek there is an area that's not going to be impacted by the project improvements. So it absolutely is immediately adjacent to the site. But as the biological report identifies, and there's a habitat map that shows the riparian portion that the impact area is outside of the riparian habitat.
Thank you. That clarifies that. And then I did have a question. It's really on the report, though. I feel like maybe it should come later, Mayor Martin. I'm not sure. It's in regard to some water mitigating issues with near the creek and outfall pipe and that kind of thing. Should I ask about that now or wait until after?
I think now would be a good time.
Okay. So I was reading that section of the report, and it seemed like it came up in a couple of places, actually, in the overall packet that we have. Sorry, I'm looking for the right page. Sorry, sorry, sorry. This was in regard to the statements that Senior Planner Murdock was just making about the entities that the applicant, that really the project needs to be approved by the U.S. Army Corps, the Waterways Group, and then Fish and Wildlife. And it had to do with the outfall and the drainage for that area and how that might impact the species in that area. I wasn't completely following where that outfall is going to be. Is it in an existing place where there's an outfall now? Or would it be created for purposes of this project?
Sure. It's a great question. So if you're familiar with the project area, there's a small culvert that actually allows you to cross Rockaway Creek that exists today. This project would connect its stormwater outfall pipe from the new stormwater infrastructure in a pipe connected through the concrete wall that extends vertically next to the culvert. So it would drill through that, connect to that, and discharge within that concrete apron that's part of the existing culvert. And it would discharge on the downstream side, and so it would not have any impacts related to flooding or water retention capacity or creek erosion or anything of that sort with respect to the up creek side. Everything would be discharged on the downstream side of that existing culvert and would discharge onto the concrete apron. Therefore, it would not have additional erosive impacts either. And as I noted in my staff report, the post-development flow is actually less than the pre-development flow due to the engineering measures incorporated into the project.
Okay. Yeah, I did note that. Thank you. I think that's all I have for now.
Okay. Thanks, Sue. Mary, you good for now?
I have just a couple questions. One is about the windows. I saw in the planning commission notes that the glare on the windows was mentioned several times, but there didn't seem to be like an answer for that question. Like, can the glare on the windows be reduced? And yeah, can you respond to that, Christian?
Sure. So we did consider that potential for glare from the windows. This is one single-family residential project as designed. And so there was no evidence that the glare would actually cause bird impacts, and to the extent that it would, that there would be significant environmental impacts. And so it's not something that we identified as a potentially significant environmental impact in our analysis.
The community feels like it is. So I think the majority of my questions are going to be after we hear the next presentation. So, thanks, Christian.
Okay, Mike or Sue, now should we invite the appellant to speak? Yes? Okay. We will go ahead and invite Chris. Is it Chris Copola?
It's going to be on behalf of Christine Copola. She will have Andrea Aiello and Rebecca Davis. And I've promoted Andrea Aiello. I'm going to promote Rebecca Davis right now.
And city clerk, have they decided if they want to reserve any of their 10 minutes for rebuttal?
Yes, they've communicated that to me, and I will have them on screen and have them confirm what they've asked for me. So my understanding, I see Rebecca Davis is on. Do we have Andrea Aiello? It looks like she's, here she comes. So my understanding is that you were going to have seven minutes presenting by Rebecca Davis, and then an additional minute by Andrea Aiello for a total of eight minutes and reserving two minutes for rebuttal. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I will, the appellant's team has provided a PowerPoint presentation, which I will bring up and share, and I'll advance those slides upon your verbal cue. Deputy City Clerk Brooks will be monitoring the time. At what time points would you like a time check? A verbal time check? As we can't, we are not able to display both the presentation and the timer at the same time.
Not a problem. When there's one minute remaining would be wonderful.
So Deputy City Clerk Brooks will note when to prompt you for the time check. And I will bring up the presentation. Deputy City Clerk Brooks will begin the time when you start your presentation, Ms. Davis.
Okay, great. So, good evening, Mayor Martin, honorable council members. My name is Rebecca Davis, and I represent Christine Copola and other Pacific residents living in Rockaway Beach neighborhood who are concerned about the environmental impact of the proposed project and the inadequacy of the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. That's now before you for adoption. Last week, in support of this appeal, we submitted a letter supported by expert comments describing a number of major inadequacies of the initial study and MND. While I don't have time to cover everything, I want to highlight a few of the major flaws that would render approval of the project and the MND a violation of SEQA. While most of my comments are going to focus on the legal aspects of our argument, you'll hear public comments from a number of others that make clear that this is not a theoretical discussion. We're talking about real impacts that this project will have on the Rockaway Beach neighborhood and the everyday lives of those who live there. So I want to start by talking about the standards under SEQA for when an environmental impact report is required compared to when a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration is sufficient. As is often said in case law, EIRs are considered the heart of SEQA. And as a result, a negative declaration can be prepared instead of an EIR only if there is no evidence in the initial study or the record that an environmental impact may occur. And this standard sets a low threshold for requiring preparation of an EIR if substantial evidence supports a fair argument that a project may have a significant impact. The lead agency must prepare an EIR even if it also possesses other substantial evidence that indicates the project will have no significant impact. So the question becomes what is meant by substantial evidence? And CEQA specifically defines substantial evidence to include facts, reasonable assumptions predicated on facts, and expert opinion supported by facts. Next slide, please. With it, oh, can we go back one, please? There we go. With this standard in mind, I want to talk about the evidence that we have that the project will have a significant and unmitigated impact on biological resources. As a starting point, the biological assessment prepared for the project does not establish an accurate baseline picture of what biological resources are present at the site. By failing to thoroughly investigate and identify sensitive biological resources at the site, the MND understates the magnitude of the project's impacts. Even though the MND's biological analysis is based on two site visits conducted by the firm WRA, nowhere in the MND or the WRA documents does it ever list what animal species were seen on the project site. Without this information, there's no way to know what impact the project may have when it removes 39 trees and other vegetation that currently serve as wildlife habitat. Our ecologist, Dr. Sean Smallwood, visited the site for less than three hours and detected 28 species, eight of which are special status species and two of which the MND claims are unlikely to use the site. In fact, of the 46 special status species that Dr. Smallwood concludes may be impacted, the MND only bothers analyzing the occurrence potential of 18 of them. Mr. Papani's previous statement tonight that Dr. Smallwood's conclusion, about Dr. Smallwood's conclusions are inaccurate. A full reading of Dr. Smallwood's letter indicates that he concludes the impacts may occur to each of these 46 species. Now, these impacts will occur in a number of ways beyond just the accidental killing of a species during project construction. According to Dr. Smallwood, impacts to special status species will occur through habitat loss and fragmentation, through impacts on wildlife movement, from window collisions and lost reproductive capacity, and cumulatively as the westerly and easterly lots are developed over time. As an expert with over 40 years of experience, Dr. Smallwood's comments constitute substantial evidence that the project will have significant impacts on biological resources that have not been mitigated. Next slide, please. In addition to an inadequate analysis of the project's environmental impacts, the initial study and MND are flawed because many of the proposed mitigation measures violate CEQA. Staying with the biological impacts, the MND does contain some measures aimed at mitigating impacts on special status species. Each of these measures requires a pre-construction survey to detect special status species. And then if any species or nest is detected, a period of avoidance is required. But once a bird or a bat, for example, has matured and vacated a nest or hibernation is complete, project construction and habitat destruction can continue. These pre-construction surveys, which are often referred to as take-avoidance surveys, are really just last-minute salvage efforts to prevent injury or death of the most readily detectable individual species. They do nothing to protect the deaths of most of the animals at risk, nor do they do anything to mitigate habitat destruction and loss of reproductive capacity. This is an example of inadequate mitigation. Without additional mitigation measures, the project's biological impacts remain significant and require an EIR. As explained in our letter, other proposed mitigation measures to reduce significant impacts constitute deferred mitigation, are uncertain, and lack evidence of feasibility. Next slide, please. Finally, while this project may seem like just the construction of a single house, its impacts go much further. By constructing a 360-foot extension of Oddstad Way and extending sewer and water utilities, the project is removing barriers for additional development on Oddstad Way. This report requires a lead agency analyze growth-inducing impacts of a proposed project, including growth-accommodating features of the project that may remove obstacles to growth. By constructing the extension of Oddstad Way and utility infrastructure, the project removes these components as a constraint on growth for other nearby parcels. The MND fails to fully describe this impact. In addition, because the westerly and easterly parcels are part of the general plan, they should have been included in the MND's cumulative impact analysis. Each additional house will bring with it additional traffic, additional construction noise, additional diesel emissions during construction, and additional impacts on wildlife as current vegetation and habitat is removed. Without this analysis, the MND is inadequate. Next slide, please. To conclude, we urge that you grant our appeal, decline to adopt the MND, and instead require an EIR be prepared to address the issues we've raised tonight. Thank you for your time. And I'd like to turn it over now to Andrea Aiello, who will discuss some of the mitigation measures that could help reduce some of these impacts.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, city council members. Thank you for your time. Yes, I represent and am part of the appellant family. We, as Rockaway Beach neighbors, ask the following. The applicant be required to acquire the additional lots and has promised he won't sell them or build on them. This promise must be memorialized by merging all the applicant's lots. A recorded deed restriction must be made so that any future property owner is, one, aware of this restriction and, two, prevented from selling off parcels. For every heritage tree removed, three trees are planted instead of just one-to-one, and they need to be taken care of for at least three to five years and watered. A detailed mitigation monitoring plan with enough dedicated staff to respond in a timely manner and something that is really enforceable. Prevent bird deaths and require windows in this home to follow the best practices in glare prevention and in preventing bird collision and bird death. We're suggesting that a hydrology study needs to be done to ensure that the downstream properties do not suffer from erosion. Preserve habitat for special status species documented in the Smallwood analysis by removing less trees. Decrease outdoor lighting on the project and for the streetlights.
Over?
Okay, thank you.
So does council have any questions for the appellant?
I, I have questions for the appellant. I guess Andrea, there was hydrology, there was habitat, there was outdoor lights, and there were some more that weren't mentioned.
We, yeah, to install shields on the streetlights to prevent evening light pollution so that to force the streetlights to be downward facing. To address traffic concerns, we need to have work hours on the project from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m., as was suggested in the MND, but not approved. And to address noise issues, a five-day-a-week construction. And of course, the neighborhood wants a specific plan. Thank you.
Thanks. Any, anyone else have any questions for the appellant?
I think I do, yeah. Could you maybe explain the concern that the community has about the drainage onto the streets or into the creek? Because you guys talked a lot about that in our conversations.
Wants to take, you want?
Andrea, do you want to?
Sure, sure. There, the, there's one house, 560 Rockaway Beach Avenue, that is right next to the site downstream. And they are extremely concerned about the impacts of, of, of the water of the creek and that this will be an increased rushing creek, particularly if there are cumulative impacts and there's more building and happening. And they are very concerned about losing their backyard. And that's, that's the main issue. And it was suggested that a hydrology study be done to really look into this issue.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So I don't see any other questions for the appellant. And now I will invite the applicant to speak. Kirk Coffee, do you want to direct this discussion?
Yes, I will. I'll transition from the appellant team to the applicant team. Just give me one moment. So I, I've brought Javier Diaz Macias and Mrs. and Shirley Fulqui.
Yes.
Yes.
Into, onto the meeting. And I'm looking to find Mr. Chavaria. Okay, and it looks like Mr. Chavaria has been able to join us as well. So the, the applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present and has the option to reserve up to three minutes for a rebuttal. What, how would you like to divide, use your time, Mr. Diaz Macias?
I think we're planning to just hold 10 minutes.
For, for your presentation with no rebuttal?
I think maybe, I think we could do it with, with maybe two minutes rebuttal.
Okay, so, so we'll go for an eight-minute presentation by applicant, reserving two minutes for rebuttal. At what time points would you like a time check by Deputy City Clerk Brooks?
Probably after a minute.
After a minute. And, and you do not have a presentation, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, then I can bring up the timer to share the screen if you'd like that. Mr. Diaz, I'll begin the timer when you start your presentation.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Team, and Honorable Council members and staff. I'm Javier Diaz Macias, applicant for Oddstad Way lots 4 to 12. And this is my wife, Shirley Fulqui. We really appreciate your time today to review our application for our family home. And we hope you will see that we did the most we could to avoid any basis for an appeal in our application. We've been working on this for seven years. And to say that, that there have been many hardships faced will be an understatement. Throughout the hardships, Myting and I have been focused on working closely with the planning department to redesign and present something that a city could approve. In our opinion, this, in our opinion, this hard work and sacrifice was acknowledged with a unanimous city planning approval in June. I will now turn over to my wife, Shirley.
Yes, thank you, esteemed council members, for your time. Despite these hard, these years of really hard work, an appeal has been filed by a Rockaway resident. And I just wanted to express that we've listened to the Neighborhood Association all these years and have already addressed the majority of many of their concerns. I'd also like to point out that their biggest concern four years ago was the adherence to the general plan. Because in the middle of our application, it was found that our land was not big enough to qualify for even one home. And this was due to the discrepancy between the general plan and the zoning standards. At our first commission hearing, we watched neighbor after neighbor who would comment very similar statements. For example, respect the general plan, adhere to the general plan. Another said that our founders had so much insight when they drafted the general plan. Stick with the intent of today's general plan. Just buy more land and build the house of your dreams. And so that's what we did. In fact, my husband voluntarily bought more than double the land and exceeded the general plan requirements. The application was therefore changed from two homes on 7,000 square feet each to just one home on 38,765 square feet. Please consider the magnitude of this change and the voluntary sacrifices that came with it. Even after my husband had enough land, he still voluntarily bought another additional 7,000 square feet of land, which we call the forest because of the grove of eucalyptus trees. It is important to note that essentially all of these new lots are being preserved, apart from the tail end of two retaining walls that roll into the smart, the small portion of Lot 10. Despite this huge effort, the Neighborhood Association had a laundry list of other concerns, which we also addressed where we could. Here are just some examples of what we did to ease their concerns. We sacrificed one entire home. Our initial application was for two homes. And the Neighborhood Association had concerns regarding adhering to the spirit of the very low-density designation. We sacrificed backyard space to ease the neighborhood grading and heritage tree removal concerns. We sacrificed one recreational house to ease the neighborhood grading concerns and concerns of a potential second home. We intentionally are saving all heritage trees on our lots, preserving the grove of eucalyptus trees, and keeping many other trees on the property. The neighborhood specifically called for preservation of the eucalyptus grove before we even owned the associated lots. We are essentially preserving about five of the nine lots that we own. They will be untouched. The Neighborhood Association initially indicated that they wanted to keep the area in pristine condition and undeveloped. While we could not satisfy this request as proposed, we think that preserving five of the nine lots is more fair. We have placed all glass railing or replaced all glass railing with iron railing to ease the concerns of light reflection and disrupting the bird flight patterns. We've merged all of our lots into one lot, thereby removing the possibility of about three homes from ever even being built there. And we paid for the independent environmental review for only one single-family home, when the minimum is typically three homes. The environmental review was an independent and very conservative study performed by a qualified consultant selected by the city. And we did not have any say in selecting the companies involved, nor any other involvement in the process. We have followed everything by the book in order to comply with regulations. Through this process, we paid over $55,000, three years of time, and kept a lot of faith that the study would show that our application can be approved tonight with the proper mitigations in place. And it did. It was determined that our project would not have the potential to cause significant impacts on the environment or that potential significant impacts could be mitigated to a less-than-significant level. And even after this determination, we further reduced the scope and impact. The outcome of the independent and conservative initial study has indicated that five homes can be built in that area with less-than-significant impact. Given that information, please remember that our application is not an application for developing all of Oddstad. Five homes, two homes, or even an extra recreational room is simply for the development of one single-family home. I want to remind you again that we have already made significant concessions for the neighborhood in an act of good faith, even when their claims were not based upon fact. We have been very flexible. For example, eucalyptus trees are not protected, but we are preserving them anyway. We feel that we have already gone above and beyond to please the neighborhood. But the appellant still wants more, and we unfortunately have exceeded our personal capacity on what is fair. The fact that we erased three entire homes from ever being built in Rockaway, and we are preserving five out of nine lots, should have been enough. Yet the appellant wants us to be responsible for the cumulative impact of developing all of Oddstad Way. And this is just too much. Our ultimate goal is to build our one-family home. We are not developing an entire street. We are just your everyday working family with kids in elementary school, and we just want to build our one-family home. No other working family would have done what we did in order to appease their future neighborhood. We believe that we've set the bar very high for any future development in the area. What you see tonight is an application for a family home that is seven years in the making and with thoughtful consideration of the environment and the neighborhood and complies with all the codes and regulations. So please, please help us get home because we don't want to lose any more forever home memories with our young children. Thank you so much. And I can pass it to Javier C. as opposed to Javier D. Javier C. is our engineer, and he is available for technical information or questions. Thank you.
Am I, can you hear me?
You can talk for one minute and 30 seconds if you want, Javier.
Yes, perfect. Javier Chavaria with J.C. Engineering. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable City Council members. The only two points that I'd like to make is the appellant is talking about hydrology analysis. That has been already performed, peer reviewed by city staff. And the current regulations require that the drainage for, from a new project has to be equal or less after development than pre-development. We have implemented sufficient engineering methods, flow-through planters, and permeable pavers, and other means to mitigate the flow of water. So therefore, the impact of the project on the creek So therefore, the impact of the project on the creek and on the neighborhood and on the street due to additional drainage will be noted. The C3 regulations are being met. The hydrology has been carefully analyzed. And we feel that the applicant has gone to every extreme to comply with the rules and regulation, to work hand on hand with the staff. And the direction that I always receive from them is let's please comply. Let's do everything that we can to make sure that our project is sustainable, environmentally safe, and that meets all the requirements. So I'm here to answer any question that you may have regarding all the technical aspects of the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Javier. All right, does council have any questions for the applicant? No council members have any questions for the applicant?
I have a list of questions, but they were all answered during the reports.
I have a question. Have you? Do you know anything about any of the natural springs that exist over there? Maybe Javier, you've experienced any of that because there are some natural spring concerns over in Rockaway?
Unfortunately, that is beyond our field of expertise to analyze underground waters. During the time that we perform site surveys and analysis of flow, we've done that summertime and wintertime. We have measured the the flow that is taking place on the current creek in on the small swell that runs parallel to the property, but we have not observed or discovered or learned of any specific underground streams.
Okay. I just my concern is that you start building and then you a couple of years later come up against a natural spring, which has happened in your neighborhood. And next thing you know, you have a huge hazard with and maybe a hydrology report may an additional hydrology report may have may have helped mitigate that ahead of time. So I just wanted to know if you had any knowledge of that on your on that property there. Okay. So no other questions then for the applicant. I will then open the public hearing and we will now receive public testimony. So what happens now is that all the attendees, there's a lot online, are requests I request now that you raise your hand, hit that little raise hand button. If you're on your phone, hit star nine if you want to talk. That will raise your hand for you. And we will now is a good time if you want to talk to this, to raise your hands. We have some pretty hearty agenda items this evening, even after this hearing. So I'm going to request from council that we allow two minutes for everyone to speak. Do I have an agreement there so we can make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to speak? Yes, okay, great. So we will, we have quite a few hands up here. I you will get two minutes to speak. Please don't make me mute you. I would I wouldn't want to do that. So I will hand it over to Deputy Clerk Elizabeth Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Our first comment will be from Chaya Gordon.
Good evening, Chaya Gordon, Rockaway Beach Avenue and a member of the Rockaway Beach Neighborhood Association. Reducing barriers to development such as building the Oddstad Road and utilities will induce population growth in Rockaway Valley and an expansion of housing traffic and environmental effects. This buildout of the easterly lots is connected because this project's making the growth more likely, but it has not been taken into account by the city's MND, which makes it out of compliance with SEQA. Now is the time to plan for this with an EIR that thoroughly analyzes impacts and mitigation measures to be required. As we've heard, there are big discrepancies between the biological report of the developers versus the the other side. And this results in an insufficient site assessment because the developers' report underestimated all of the species. By relying only on an MND and not an EIR, it doesn't establish an accurate baseline for sensitive biological resources. And the city staff report incorrectly concluded that no substantial impact on the environment would occur. The project would block wildlife movement to Sweeney Ridge. Nesting birds are protected federally and by the state, but the mitigation measures in the developers' assessment are inadequate. The biological assessment, the biological analysis supporting the MND is inadequate, not the essential action that SEQA requires, which means that the mitigation measures planned are also inadequate. SEQA says an MND is not adequate and an EIR must be prepared when there is a reasonable possibility that at least one significant effect exists. This is the law. I ask you to support the appeal. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from John Keener, followed by Denia Denia S. Niss.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, council and staff. So I think that the SEQA analysis resulting in the mitigated negative declaration is flawed because of the of an inadequate biological assessment. The Rockaway Beach Neighborhood Association hired a biologist on their own to survey the property, that's Dr. Smallwood. And their biologist found numerous species that the author of the mitigated negative declaration detect. And the biologist also found that the project will have a significant effect on wildlife movement from east to west, up and down the valley. So a full environmental impact report is required to analyze these findings, I believe. And a full environmental impact report is also necessary to analyze the cumulative impacts on plants and wildlife of future projects to the east and west which the mitigated negative declaration doesn't do. So I support delaying approval of this project until a full EIR is completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm speaking as a member of the Rockaway Beach Neighborhood Association and I'm asking you to support the appeal because of several issues that concern me about the project that need more intensive study. We're asking for an EIR because this project removes barriers to future development and is growth inducing on the easterly lots. An EIR will give an analysis of the impacts of the project, which lays the groundwork for any relevant needed mitigation. The growth that will occur from this project has not been taken into account by the MND and EIR is needed and required. I still have questions in my mind that indicate there could be an impact on the environment from this project. And so an EIR is needed. My first concern is traffic and I'm trying to make this shorter. What will be the impact of this project on traffic in the Rockaway area, on Fassler and the intersection of Fassler and Highway 1? There are already traffic concerns in these areas. Left turns onto Rockaway from Fassler with traffic backing up onto Fassler is a concern. The morning commute traffic backing up the hill and the actual intersection at Highway 1 and Fassler, where people are trying to make that right turn. And with more traffic and more frustration, this is a big concern. I'm concerned about accidents there. And we need further study to make sure that we don't have injuries and accidents. I also speak to the need for an EIR as a bird watcher. During these pandemic times, bird and nature watching provides so many of us with wonderment and escape. The common yellow-throated is a favorite species of mine and it's one of the species sighted by Dr. Smallwood. It's being endangered by the by the Oddstad Way project because its habitat is misidentified. The biological assessment says the yellow-throated requires low dense stands of willows, which won't be available at the site. But is that accurate and what is the impact if not knowing that? There are willows in that area. And in fact, the species can and does live in other habitats of low shrubbery as well. I've heard them and seen them when I walk on Rockaway near Buell. For these and many other reasons, I urge you to support the appeal. Thank you.
Now we'll hear from Janine Crawford.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council members, for your time this evening. I would like to comment on the road condition and traffic impacts on Rockaway Beach Avenue. I heard Planner Murdoch mention LOSF and I believe that is referring to Highway 1 and Fassler. But there is another issue and that is just traffic on Rockaway Beach Avenue itself. Especially between Buell and Oddstad Way, which is where I live. That's where the trucks will be turning off. Rockaway Beach is extremely narrow. It's not well maintained. And you can't have two cars pass each other if they're going in opposite directions. One car always has to pull over to the side. So I would refer to the 2017 Traffic Impact Analysis, which called for some mitigation around this fact. It asked that traffic, construction traffic start at nine and end at four. I believe that the MND ignored this recommendation. So I would ask that if you do deny this appeal, please adopt the recommendations of that traffic impact analysis. The other point that I would like to make is around wildfires. You know, we had a wildfire a few years ago and it was hard for people to get out when they were evacuated out of this valley. I think that the fact that we're going to be building a new road and utilities is going to make it much more likely that more lots will be developed. And that is going to make evacuations a little scarier. And even back in 2016, at a planning meeting, Planner Murdoch mentioned this and mentioned that there's a conflict between evacuees trying to escape and emergency responders trying to get in. My time is up, so thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
Gloria Stofen, when you're ready.
Good evening, city council members and city staff. My name's Gloria Stofen. I'm a longtime resident of Rockaway Beach or of Pacifica since 1966 and a resident of Rockaway Beach since 1971. My concerns of this project is the safety issue where I live at 510 Rockaway Beach. I have witnessed more and more traffic going up and down the street. The street can only carry so much traffic that it is breaking down in many places. Especially when it rains, huge holes appear that cause much damage to cars as a consequence. However, the main concern for me is the one way in and the one way out. A safety plan needs to be developed. Many years ago, when Pacifica had those major landslides in the back of the valley, well, Rockaway had them too. One of the homes across the street from me had damage from a landslide and this home is located at the very beginning of the street. What if a major landslide or firestorm happens and residents are blocked in and can't move out? Please support the appeal. Our infrastructure needs to be improved. Rockaway needs a safety plan before any further development occurs. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jen Brick or Birch, I'm not sure how to pronounce that. You're next.
Oh, hi, thank you. It's Brick. Thanks a lot for listening to our comments tonight. Can you guys hear me okay? Great. So I am the one who lives at 560 Rockaway Beach Avenue with my family next to the creek. And we moved here a little over a year ago. And I'm really worried about the impact of this project because it opens up the area for more additional development as we've heard from the city tonight, the westerly lots and also easterly. And I'm really worried about the impact of the drainage on the creek. And I'm scared that we'll lose our land and property if the creek floods as a result. And and just to be clear, that bridge that sort of goes over the creek is right next to our property. And I believe we are on the downstream side, which Mr. Murdoch referenced. And I believe he was talking more about the upstream properties, but we're on the downstream side, I believe. So after reading all of these reports, I I'm just so disturbed by the potential for drainage and runoff impact. And I'm just respectfully asking for more assurance, studies, hydrology analysis from the city and the developer. An independent port report would be great on the impact of these projects and these developments on the creekside properties before it's allowed to move forward. I think it should be known, for example, whether the creek flow needs to be altered or other potential impacts first and not after the project is approved, which I believe is how it's written in the documents. A lot of this is deferred, as Dr. Smallwood points out, and that really makes me nervous. I think, as one of you pointed out, are there any natural springs underground that we need to worry about? When I visited the planning commission before we purchased this property, I asked them if there were neighborhood issues and they said, well, yeah, when it rains in Rockaway, water can run down the street right into very.
Sorry, Jen.
Thank you. That's okay. Thanks a lot for your time.
Next, we'll hear from Billy Tognazi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I would like to speak on the Oddstad Way Project. My name is Billy Tognazi. I live at 625 Rockaway Beach Ave. And I'm a member of the Rockaway Beach Neighborhood Association. My real concerns tonight are about our traffic and roads here in Rockaway Beach. As I'm sure you know, Rockaway's infrastructure is in bad shape. The street has not been paved paved in over 30 years. The drainage system for water runoff is poor at best. There is significant traffic in the morning and there has been no word or signs of improvement. For example, 633 Rockaway Beach Ave has had a constant stream of water that flows in front of my house and all the way down the block on the north side of the street. Not only does this stream erode the street, but I've seen multiple people slip and fall down in the algae that has built up on the road. If there is significant runoff from the new development on Oddstad Way, will the city of Pacifica take care of it? Or will they let the neighborhood deal with it as they have with the stream from 633? Natural springs in Rockaway Beach are a real thing and they need to be addressed if they do occur. If traffic problems in Rockaway worsen after this new street is developed, will the city of Pacifica offer any solutions? Or will they leave us to deal with the potholes that continually get patched, as many people have spoken about, which further deteriorate our vehicles as we drive over them? Have the access and egress for the traffic plan in case of an emergency been truly considered for this? If there's a vegetation fire or earthquake in this neighborhood, it will be very challenging to evacuate residents and even more challenging getting emergency resources into the area. I recently spoke with the members of the Pacifica Fire Department. We stated the biggest challenge when accessing the vegetation fire in 2015 was that the whole neighborhood was asked to evacuate. So they were had a lot of vehicles that were exiting Rockaway as they were trying to make their way in and therefore leaving potential for more homes to be in danger.
Time intended, Mr. Tognazi.
All right, Billy.
Next, we'll hear from Carol.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, great. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to address you. I am speaking in support of the EIR request submitted by our neighborhood in concern of issues regarding the development of the lot on Oddstad Way, the lots on Oddstad Way and in support of a neighborhood plan for further development. The very nature of what makes Rockaway Beach Avenue unique and appealing to all of us, including the people who wish to build here, can be destroyed by what's. including the people who wish to build here, can be destroyed by what's being proposed. In considering the short term and long term effects of the construction on the natural environment, on the infrastructure, and on the roadway itself, this plan is daunting. This project, infinitely bigger than anything that's been done here in recent years, will change the neighborhood permanently, and if approved in any configuration, will take a very long time to complete. Whatever major construction is done, a neighborhood is disrupted and negatively impacted. While the builders and residents doing the projects benefit in the end, there's no compensation for the neighbors who suffer during the process. In the past, I've suggested an escrow account that builders and developers pay into to mitigate damage to roads and areas affected by construction. If approved, even a modified form, this project should absolutely be required to do that. But first, the damage to the environment must be assessed. To the people planning the building, let me say, there's a very nice big house for sale at 888 Rockaway. It's on the creekside, has lots of land, allows for parking, and is already built. The time, money, and effort spent on this project, which is controversial and stress inducing for everyone, could be spent making that house into your dream home, and we would welcome you as neighbors. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Next, Bernard Sanders.
Hello, good evening. Bernard Sanders, Terranova Boulevard. Just like to say, the home that is planned for by the applicants looks beautiful. I fully support it as a neighbor and would welcome them and their home. Seems like they've made a lot of concessions. I ask fellow neighbors to think about, think big picture, what happens if we continue to deny people the right to build on the land? They're going to sue the city. They're going to sue the city for a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of effort, cause more stress. So I think these folks have done a lot of good concessions. They've cut down the number of possible homes that can be built on that land, and I fully support allowing them to build. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from caller with the phone number ending 0547.
Good evening. Thank you for taking these call-ins. My name is Vera. I live on Bayview, and I am a member of the Rockaway Beach Association. I'm not against the development in particular of appropriate growth. The question that I'm not clear about is why we're not pursuing, having an EIR pursued with all the questions that are being raised. And the other comment I wanted to make is that the requests that were spelled out by Andrea and the association seem to be reasonable. You know, things like making sure that the outdoor lights are facing downwards, addressing some of the noise reduction requests and things like that. Seem that they aren't going to be that particularly daunting for the folks who want to move here. And I think they're the types of things that they would want for themselves if they had people moving into their neighborhood. The only other comment I wanted to make is that Rockaway Beach really needs to have a larger plan in terms of how we're going to be living in this neighborhood, having managed growth. And so I want to put that to the city council because I don't believe that the general plan for the city currently covers that. And I wanted to make a respectful request that we look at that. And I'm sure that the neighbors, as you can see, will be very involved and engaged in that process where we'd have the opportunity to do so. Thank you very much.
Gail Benton Shoemaker, you're next.
My name is Gail Benton Shoemaker, and I am part of a citizens group called Tree City Pacifica. As you know, last year, Pacifica was awarded the designation of Tree City USA. This was in part because of our heritage tree ordinance and the recognition of the value of trees. This includes the fact that trees combat climate change by sequestering and storing carbon, which is in alignment with the city's climate action goals. Trees also beautify our city and improve property values. The proposed logging of 39 trees in Rockaway will release carbon into the atmosphere and change the environment of the neighborhood. It would be best if the trees were not removed, but if the council votes to approve the development, mitigation for the trees is important. Often, when a heritage tree permit is appealed and removal is allowed, it is under the condition that three trees are planted to replace each heritage tree. The City of South San Francisco, which has been a Tree City USA for more than 30 years, has a plant back requirement of three trees for every heritage tree removed. I would like to request that the city council require developers removing trees to plant three trees for each heritage tree and one tree for each of the other trees logged. Some of these trees may need to be planted in other sites, preferably in Pacifica. This condition will help mitigate the damage done by logging operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Macias, you're next.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, council and staff. I am Erin Macias of Pacifica. After watching the presentation, I wish to comment on the project. Many residents have commented on the 2015 fire. This grass fire began about 3 o'clock in the morning, and about 80 to 90 homes were placed at risk as terrified residents scrambled to evacuate. Looking at the aerial view and after hearing what the applicants have done to mitigate these environmental concerns from my lenses, this project greatly benefits this niche neighborhood in Rockaway Beach. The project eliminates dead and decaying trees that pose an immediate threat to the community. They're visible from the aerial view. And it also creates a new point of attack for fire department personnel. Considering the current situation of the wildfires, I do think this is something that the city should heavily consider, the benefit to having that additional attack point in Rockaway Beach. I personally feel this family is being put through the grinder to build a single-family home in an area that is fully suitable for this project. And I think it's really unfair to blame them for any potential future development. This is a single-family home. They have done a tremendous amount of work just to build their home. I think that you should approve the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ashley Gibson, you're next.
Hi, thanks for taking my comment. I'm not against this particular development, but I am concerned about future development and the lack of an EIR. I'm a resident of Rockaway Beach Avenue, and I listened to the Planning Commission call on June 15. As I think all of you know, infrastructure in this area is strained from the sewers. There needs to be manu drains, the proliferation of potholes on the road. That is not a priority for the city to upgrade. The concerns raised during that call in June, in June, really talked about a lack of infrastructure. So I really feel that, given that this is, you know, this development, I think a lot of folks are really concerned that this will lead to future developments. I really think that we should think about getting an EIR. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan.
Hi, my name is Susan Miller, and I want to thank the council for listening and for all your service to the community. The building on Oddstad Way, as you have heard, will remove the barriers to a buildout of this neighborhood, not only on the westerly lots, but the easterly lots. Those east lots have not been considered in the MND. And I believe an EIR is very important in considering those easterly lots also. And as you have heard, even before a complete buildout of the area, the roads in Rockaway Beach are inadequate for the amount of traffic now, even more especially during mass exiting like in a fire. This is becoming more and more of a concern as fires rage around us and we read of citizens having their lives in jeopardy when there is only one way out. The poor quality of the infrastructure was considered at the March 7, 2016 Planning Commission meeting, in which Planner Murdoch stated, I quote, "that the existing infrastructure was unlikely to accommodate the scale of new development and would require substantial infrastructure upgrades." But throughout this project, he said that the valley can handle the increased growth and the negative secondary consequences of this growth because the 1980 general plan says it can. I don't understand how it can be both ways. Maybe we could have an explanation on what has changed in the innovating four years. At the same meeting, many commissioners voiced their concerns about the piecemeal approach to the development of the valley. We need a program-level EIR and a comprehensive plan for the development of Rockaway Beach. I am hoping the city council believes that there are too many unanswered questions about this project and its effect on future growth, its impact to traffic, infrastructure, and the habitat in the area. I urge you to vote to approve the appeal.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott R.
Hello, I came for the oversized RVs, and I listened to this family's story. Their house is amazing. It's beautiful. And I'm frustrated that it's, I'm frustrated for them that it's taken seven years to build a single-family home that will bring in tax revenue. I'm seeing a massive influx in RVs hitting our streets. They're dumping their black water. They're littering out on our streets. You know, it's ruining the environment. These aren't California natives. I see a lot of out-of-state plates. They're not paying the registration. This family is paying taxes. So I'm sorry for them to have to go through this, and I'll yield my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is a call-in from caller phone number ending 1066.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Martin and council members, my name is Joanne Wilson. I have lived in the Rockaway Beach neighborhood for about 15 years. I urge you to approve this appeal and require an EIR for the proposed project due to the significant growth-inducing impacts that have not been analyzed or disclosed in the ISMND, including those related to community safety and infrastructure. As you are aware, our neighborhood has only one point of ingress and egress at Rockaway Beach Avenue in Buell. The 21 lots east of the proposed project were not included in the ISMND's cumulative analysis. At various public hearings and documents for the proposed project, city staff took the position that the development of these easterly lots is not reasonably foreseeable. This assertion is belied by the facts. In recent years, we have seen more site development permit applications filed to develop hillside parcels in Rockaway Beach. Currently, there appears to be three such proposed projects in our neighborhood, not including the proposal being considered tonight. According to the map on the Planning Department's website, these applications include a proposal to develop three single-family homes east of the proposed project, requiring further extension of Oddstad Way and associated utilities. What exactly is the tipping point for the city to finally pay attention to the significant safety and infrastructure issues associated with hillside development in Rockaway Beach? Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Chin, you're our next speaker.
Hi, good evening. This is Dana Chin. I'm representing the Rockaway Neighborhood Association. We live on Bayview Road. I'd first like to state that I'm not against building in Rockaway, and I do empathize with the family. And I would hope that they would ask for the same things that we are asking for, for their own safety, for their family. I do respectfully ask you to support this appeal and order an EIR based on the current and high cumulative impact of opening construction on Oddstad and other areas of Rockaway Beach neighborhood. As Commissioner Murdoch just confirmed, there are already three other applications for some of the westerly lots. Therefore, growth along Oddstad is not speculative, and all the potential impacts described are not speculative. Commissioner Bixtik has driven out to our neighborhood prior to the Planning Commission hearing in June, where he acknowledged the poor state of our current infrastructure. Continuing to build without the relevant EIR, no comprehensive neighborhood plan, and current poor infrastructure is not responsible. I would hope the city has the foresight and the future plan of our neighborhood and is serving the residents and the safety in mind. I also want to speak to the destruction of at least 39 trees and other vegetation, just as the DS Maces project would occur. The biological analysis supporting the MND was inadequate. Our neighborhood hired an expert with decades of experience, Dr. Smallwood, and within a two-short-hour visit, he identified many wildlife species, eight of which are special status species. There is no plan to mitigate the habitat loss and protect the wildlife. There are also many natural springs, and one is clearly running down Rockaway Beach. And these should also be taken into consideration for the continued building in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Campbell, you're our next speaker.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, council and staff. My name is Richard Campbell, and I was a former planning commissioner. I just wanted to add some context to your decision-making tonight. Back in February 2016, I was chair of the Planning Commission when we held an agenda study session that spanned over two nights, another night in February, where we talked about development on parcels designated very low-density residential in Rockaway. And it became apparent during that meeting, well, two things. One is growth in the westerly and easterly lots, all of them on Oddstad, was eminently foreseeable. Well, it's the reason we had the study session, and the minutes bear that out. Second was that a lot of the, well, several residents were wanting a larger specific plan or a larger study of growth in Rockaway. And it's unfortunate we haven't had that in the last four years. And I thought that Planner Murdoch said it well in a couple instances, that we needed a broader plan. You know, he mentioned that we were trying to figure out an orderly way to account for growth and to not let something haphazard happen there, there being Rockaway, that leads to unintended consequences. And so I do think that while we don't have a, we didn't get a specific plan in the last four years, but I do think an EIR is definitely warranted considering the foreseeable growth that we were looking at back in 2016. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rich. Okay. Mayor Martin, I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, great. Is it possible for us to take a five-minute break in the middle of this hearing? City Attorney? Yes? Okay. It is 9:28. We will come back at 9:34. I know that's six minutes. There's also been a lot of discussion about the other lots, like the other 21 lots. And so I don't see how, I know that they're concerned about that, but I don't see how we can really talk.
but I don't see how we can really talk about that with this project. Is that, is that a correct perspective? Like, because those lots don't really have anything to do with these lots, right?
So we acknowledge in the analysis of the project that there are these dozens of lots which exist along Oddstat Way. That's, it's a fact, it's a matter of record, this subdivision was made in 1908, and these lots exist as legal lots. What's more difficult to determine, and we put a lot of thought into establishing the threshold for determining whether this project would cause likely or potential development of some, some or all of those lots. And the best analysis that we could come up with was the reasonable conclusion that being connected to the street extension and the utilities extensions would increase your potential and your likelihood and reduce barriers to development, and not being connected to those would have no measurable effect. Any effect from not being connected to the street would be speculative. We can't determine what percentage of likelihood you could, you know, go to develop that property as, as a result of that. And so for that reason, we excluded everything east of the street and utilities extension. That's called the easterly lots, most of those areas. There are some lots east of the easterly lots, which are even more distant and even less likely to be related to the project. So what we concluded is the westerly lots, as described in the ISMND, are those that have the potential to develop as a result of this project. And we analyzed cumulative impacts where we could reasonably conclude what those impacts would be. Traffic, potentially noise, but we don't know how big those homes will be, if they're ever developed. We don't know where they'll be on the site, so we can't conclude all of the potential impacts from them, and we acknowledge that in the ISMND. So we had to draw a line somewhere, and we used the reasonable basis of connection to the street and the utility.
And I think that leads into my last question, and that is the community's really asking for a specific plan. Christian, can you explain when the city does specific plans?
Of course. So I think the community's concerns about a lot of the existing conditions in Rockaway Beach are warranted, absolutely. This area was not subdivided in accordance with modern standards. There are a lot of deficiencies to the existing infrastructure, and absolutely, if the city has the means to do it, a specific plan could be a helpful tool to put processes and standards in place, including funding mechanisms, to improve that infrastructure in a way that the community may find more desirable. With that said, to do that would require the city council to make that a work plan priority and to resource it with the appropriate budget to carry out that rather intensive planning exercise. That planning process, you know, at the, the drawn-out, sort of zoomed-out, large-scale view of the neighborhood, absolutely makes sense. When you zoom in and change the perspective to a specific project, like this project, the legal standards to evaluate the impacts of the project and the environmental impacts are completely different. And the city is bound by substantial evidence and other legal rules that say this project only needs to evaluate the impacts it causes, not to rectify existing degraded conditions of the baseline, many of which are present in the Rockaway Beach neighborhood. A different set of tools and a separate process is needed to address those.
Thank you, Christian, very much.
I have to admit, the biggest thing that the neighbors have mentioned, mentioned that I am very concerned about is the cumulative effects if stuff has developed. Because I remember seeing way back when a map of Rockaway Beach, and there was paper streets on both sides of the valley. And if all of those paper streets, even if you merged lots and had, you know, like this one, one house on, what was it, a 30,000-square-foot lot, you're still going to have quite a lot of housing added to that. And I just looked at our pavement condition index, and this street is rated zero, okay? And rated very poor in terms of years of life remaining. And I am very concerned and about, and I'm glad to see the Planning Commission put in the condition of bringing the street up to the standards such as they are after construction, okay? I think that is important because those big trucks going over and over that street are going to be a concern. I do think some of the requests from the, I agree, you can't have this house do an EIR because I, I know they're very, very expensive, I guess, a sequoia exempt, single-family homes, but they can't take on the whole valley, and that's what would happen there. But I do feel some of the other stuff from the appellant's in terms of a deed restriction and selling lots, that they won't be built. I also think some of the stuff regarding the lights, you know, pointing down to reduce light pollution. I'm actually kind of surprised that of the, the trees that are there, they want eucalyptus, which are highly flammable. I think that's, I think that might need to be rethought. So those are my comments right now.
So, Christian, I'm going to ask that question, which was, what was the difference between a few years ago and what was thought to be a major impact on infrastructure versus today?
Sure, happy to answer your question, Madam Mayor. And I wonder, at what point, we want to hear the rebuttals as well that have been reserved. But to answer your question first, I think the key difference is this applicant heated the feedback given to him by the city and went out and aggressively acquired significant new holdings of land. The initial version of this proposal, which came to the city and which the Planning Commission, in fact, denied, was two single-family homes, each on 7,500-square-feet lots. That would be 15,000 square feet in total for two single-family residences. This applicant went back and obtained nearly an acre of land, more, you know, nearly 40,000 square feet, to develop one single-family residence. That allowed the applicant to comply with the general plan density standards, which resolved a significant barrier in staff's perspective to development of the site. The prior proposal was well below the general plan density standards and was not consistent with the general plan, and the Planning Commission at that time was not willing to recommend approval of a general plan amendment to a different designation, which would have allowed the property to develop. I think that's the, the number-one difference between the prior proposal years ago and this proposal today.
Okay. Okay, I, I agree, I think there were a number of challenges that were brought up that I, I, well, let me, let me just back up. And, and I want to say that I am thankful that the property owners went back and, and revised their plans based on feedback from the community and the neighbors. And I think they did a great job, and just hearing, being able to hear your story tonight really was important, I think, not just for us, but for your future neighbors. So thank you, and I hope all of the neighbors are also thankful for those, those redesigns and those mitigation tactics that they put in. But I am also concerned about some of-
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, we do need to hear-
Oh, yeah.
rebuttals before council begins any deliberation.
You got it, yeah, you got it, you got it. But can I ask questions right now, or should I wait till the rebuttals?
I would prefer that, unless you have questions from the appellant's or for the appellant's or the applicant's, I would suggest that you wait to have questions or any more discussion until we've finished with-
Am I going to be able to ask those questions of the appellant or the applicant?
I'm sorry, what?
Am I going to be able to ask questions of the appellant and applicant?
Yes, because I believe they both have rebuttal time, and you can always ask questions-
Okay.
-after you hear comments from the applicant or the appellant.
Okay, I'll hand it over to City Clerk.
Hey, I'm going to transition the appellant team up for their rebuttal time, give me one moment, please. So I brought up Rebecca Davis and Andrea Aiello from the appellant team, and I will bring up the timer for their rebuttal period, which is two minutes. I'll begin the timer when you're ready to speak to the rebuttal.
I'll be brief, as I know it's late and you have a lot left on your agenda. We do appreciate the work that has been done by applicants, but unfortunately, there are still remaining impacts that have not been mitigated. You've heard the concerns of many neighbors tonight, and the project just isn't ready for approval this evening. We're asking for just compliance with the law, an evaluation and mitigation of the impacts that we've identified, including cumulative impacts. Again, we ask you to grant the appeal and decline to adopt the MND until additional mitigation measures are required. And I'm, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council members may have.
Thank you. Anyone? Okay, so you can move on.
I, I believe the applicant has some rebuttal time as well, if, if we are done with the appellant's rebuttal.
Yes, I, I will make that transition right now. Mr. Diaz-Massias, I have your total rebuttal time set at two minutes, and I will start that time when you begin your rebuttal.
Okay, I'll go ahead and speak. There were a lot of comments and a lot of notes, so I'm just kind of going to go through what I have here. I first wanted to address the former Commissioner, Richard Campbell's, comments about the 2016 study session, and I just wanted to remind him or anyone on the call tonight that that study session was specifically, the purpose of that study session was really to identify what could be done about the substandard lots for the very low-density designation. At that time, our lots were substandard. As Christian, Christian has already mentioned, we only had 15,000 square feet for two homes. And so that entire study session and the high-level plan was really being driven because of this issue that was identified with the very low-density designation and the substandard lots. We are no longer in that category. However, the three westerly lots that are currently incomplete per Christian's earlier comments, that have applications at this moment, all of those lots, I believe, are still under the substandard classification, so they do not have the same amount of land or sufficient land, according to the general plan. And so therefore, they're kind of in a different level and would require something different. Back then, when we had our council meeting, we sat with the, after we had our council, excuse me, commission, the very first one, we sat down with Tina Wehrmeister, the planning director, and she-
Michelle Mu?
I, I've paused the time, we're not able to hear you, Ms. Fulqui. I've, I've stopped the time until we can hear you.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know where I left off, but-
Left off at chief, did you?
Chief? I'm not sure, but I'll just go ahead and talk. So we sat down with the planning director after our first commission, and we were, we were explained that in order to get approval for, if we had smaller lots, we needed this high-level plan, but because we have bigger, big lot, a big lot now, we essentially do not require this high-level plan anymore. So I guess that took up most of the time, but I have many other comments, but we'll keep it at that. We're just trying to build our family home, and we're doing everything we can, thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, unless council members have specific questions for the applicant or the appellant, I would ask that you formally close the public hearing.
Okay, I have some questions for the applicant. Some of the, some of the things that, and I don't know if it's for the engineer or, or, or the family, that are being requested, I'm assuming, I, I heard that you're not interested in making a concession for a hydrology study, and that you, and that you believe that all of the, the mitigation tactics for the habitat species and, and studies mitigate those issues that have been brought up. Has, is there any consideration for work hours being nine to four? I'm having work done in my backyard right now, and it's from nine to four, and they get a lot done at nine to four. Is there being any consideration for shields on the streetlights? And and I'd also like to, to talk a little bit about trees. We are a tree city in Pacifica, and so we're taking out a lot of trees, and I'm hoping that maybe there can be a, an accommodation for financially, you know, contributing to a tree back, given that there's going to be so many cut down.
In, in reference to the hydrology, no, we are not declining to do any studies. We have already done the hydrology studies. And then after, I said that that was not my field of expertise, I went to review the soils report, and the soils report did not encounter any groundwater in the areas where the test borings were done, which are the critical areas of the site. So it is indeed reasonable to assume that there are not significant underground currents in the area.
And how about runoff? You know, certain times of the year, we, we have runoff issues, right? So how is it down lower?
Yeah, the hydrology analysis that we've done, it takes into consideration not just the property, but the entire tributary area to the site. So 3.67 acres is the basin that provides runoff to the point of concentration that we are studying right now. So the current conditions, the coefficient of runoff is considered .28. That means that only 28% of the water flows out to the concentration point. Everything else is dispersed on the property or on the basin itself. We are proposing improvement of the street and improvement of the house. It's only .37 acres. Improved areas have a coefficient of runoff of approximately .9, meaning that 90% of the water generated by these improved areas will be discharged. And it is our job, following the C-3 regulations, to make sure that that additional volume of water is managed on-site. So we have a flow-through planters, detention systems, a flow, I'm sorry, permeable pavers, and there are calculations that we perform that help us manage that outflow. So when the water from these 3.67 acres, most of it unimproved, and the small portion that has been improved gets to the point of the creek, that volume has to be equal or lower than pre-development. So we perform calculations, the engineering department and the peer consultants from CSG will review all that to ensure that our calculations are accurate and that have taken into consideration all the aspects and all the storms that are expected in a hundred-year event.
The, the, the habitat species, I know there were two different studies, one by the applicant and one by the appellant, and it seemed that the appellant's scientific study came back with a lot more, I guess, biological diversity and, and species habitats. And that is of concern to me as well. I mean, we have mountain lions running across Terra Nova Boulevard, which is a fairly- which is a fairly busy street. I have game trails in my backyard, so I'm just finding it hard to believe that the applicant's study turned up with a lot fewer species there, and that concerns me and automatically would make me feel more at ease if there was more of an environmental impact done. So how about the work hours and the shields on streetlights? Is there any opportunity to help out with that?
I think I saw... So we had already significantly reduced the number of lighting in our house, for our house. I think it was like originally a lot. We didn't realize it was like 46 lights, and it went down to 16 lights. And I think I read somewhere in the report that there's like a city standard for the lighting, and so this is already complying with the 16 lights, as well as the streetlights. It's going to be implemented per city standards. And the intent of the lighting is to make sure that like there's pedestrian and bike safety as they're walking at night. So if it's too dim, then, you know, that could pose a hazard. And I think I'm personally nervous also. You're mentioning that you have mountain lions, you know, in your backyard. I have young kids and pets, and I want to make sure that we have some good lighting in our house and that it's not too dim, because for us, that would be a hazard as a family living in the house. Obviously, you've seen that our house is removed from the rest of the neighborhood. We're essentially kind of like an isolated area, surrounded in forest. And so the mountain lions could essentially come from left, right, you know, east, northwest, wherever. So that would be a little bit worrying for us. I'm not sure how low they... I know they wanted us to go down to 10 lights, but that seems to me that it would... There would be no safety or illumination at that point.
Madam Mayor, I did want to offer that the Public Works Department can speak to the standard design for streetlights. And also, we can provide some additional information regarding the biological resource analyses that have been prepared by the city, as well as by the project appellant. Nick, Mr. Papani, would you mind talking to the biological resources first, please?
Yes, thank you, Christian. Again, Nick Papani with Rainy Planning and Management. Thank you for your concerns noted, Madam Mayor. I wanted to point out that it's important, and as I've been looking at the letter from Smallwood in a little more detail, it's important to understand that the way that Mr. Smallwood is defining special-status species is different than how the WRA report that was prepared and incorporated into the SEQA document. And again, that report was peer-reviewed by our independent third-party bioconsultant. The definitions of what special status is different. And the Smallwood letter, their definition does not comport with standard industry practice. So for example, it includes species that are protected under the fishing game code. And the citation is provided. I'm looking at Table 1 of the applicant's... Or excuse me, excuse me, the appellant's report, the Smallwood report. That section was really... It was enacted at really the turn of the century, in the early 1900s, and it was aimed at protecting birds. So at that time, there was a lot of collection of eggs. It even was intended to limit falconry that was occurring. Those sections are not intended to suggest that those species are rare. They're just regulations enacted early at the turn of the century. And so the listing that is included in the Smallwood report is much larger because he's including species that are not necessarily rare and are not typically included in a SEQA analysis. So our biologist focused on species that are either threatened, rare, endangered. They have special status under the state, and some of those include fully-protected species, like the whitetail kite, or California species of special concern, which is also a Fish and Wildlife designation. So there's two different approaches being taken here. Ours is focused on species that are rare, which is what's required under the California Environmental Quality Act. And the Smallwood component expands that to a much larger list of species. That's not to say those species are not important, but those species, if found on-site, such as great horned owl, some others are mentioned as well, Cooper's hawk. Those species have no particular rarity special status, but they would be protected by pre-construction surveys. They'd be identified through any... before any construction occurs. The special-status species that are indicated, the commenters have noted that eight special-status birds were detected on-site. That's not true under the way special-status species are typically defined. If we use the typical definition, which focuses on rarity, that's two bird species and one mammal species. San Francisco dusky-footed woodrat, which was identified in the WRA report used in our analysis, there's mitigation to protect that species. The two bird species are yellow-breasted chattan and the yellow warbler, and those are associated with riparian habitats. And again, this project is not directly impacting riparian habitat. And furthermore, the pre-construction surveys incorporated would protect those species if they were to be found in the surrounding area. Lastly, I'd just point out that the preface to the table of species found on-site, it says that the biologist Smallwood detected 28 species on and around the project site. So it's really not clear if they were on the site or around the site. And to say that those species are all found on-site, at least from the way the reporter's word is not clear. So I wanted to kind of clarify that. And again, bottom line, the definition of species included in the Smallwood report is much larger and expansive. It includes common species that some of the protection laws are rather antiquated, going back to the early part of the century. But nevertheless, if they were found on-site, they'd be protected through special-status species requirements for surveys that are included. I hope that helps. I'm happy answering any other question.
It helps. It doesn't... It helps, thank you, but it also doesn't give the other side of the story, which... There's always going to be two sides, right? So thank you for that. Stephanie, Director Bautista?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. In regards to the light standard, we reviewed the photometrics for the standard light standard or the city standard light. And we found that the illumination pattern for that light standard would shine on the street and not spill over to private property. So definitely, it would be directed towards the street and illuminate the street. So it would provide the right amount of foot candles on the street to illuminate the entire street. Thank you.
There were talk about shields on the streetlights?
Well, so typically, this light standard, if, you know, it pointed downwards, you wouldn't need the shield. The pattern or the illumination footprint on the street would be in the direction and directed right on the street and not out to the private property. So it would be directly, directly down.
Work hours, nine to four? Any takers?
So, Madam Mayor, I would really suggest that if you're done with specific questions for the applicant or the appellant, that you close the public hearing.
No, I'm not...
And then we'll bring it back to the applicant.
That's my question. That's a question.
To the applicant?
To the applicant. Do we have any from the applicant in making a concession for work hours being from nine to four?
Yep. Yes, Council, we would like to propose, how about eight to six, Monday to Friday, and Saturday, nine to five?
No, that's more than... No, nine... Like, what they're looking for is nine to four, Monday through Friday. So eight to six is three hours more than that.
I think right now, we were approved for seven to seven, right? Monday through Friday, and then nine to five on Saturday. And I think, you know, the more that we kind of constrain the time for the work hours, the longer it would make our project last. So there's some give and take that we have to consider with the project timelines at that point. I think that nine to five is too constricting.
What I'm trying to get at is some sort of concession for being able to say, yeah, I support the project. But I know you've already made a lot of concessions, but I don't hear... What I want to hear is more concessions being made tonight.
And Madam Mayor, that you can always, after you close the public hearing, you can come back after council deliberations and then ask a question of the appellant with regard to, you know, if there are additional conditions that you have concerns with. But this is the time to ask them questions about their presentation. If you want to talk about new conditions or revising conditions, I would suggest you do that after you close the public hearing and then back to council.
Okay, I will close the public hearing then.
Sue Beckmeyer, did you have questions?
I had a couple of... Wait, am I on mute? No. A couple of the questions I had were addressed. I was very concerned about the water issues, the creek, and the impact of this project in the consideration of the size of the lot that that house is being built on, with the smaller lots all adjoined together. And I had asked the question of Planning Director Hauser on that point, and she reminded me of the mitigation measures. And this is... It's on packet page 451. And I was just reflecting on that and noting that there are levels of additional approval that are going to be required when this project moves forward with the Army Corps of Engineers, with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And as I was reviewing those items, I was also noting the... some of the habitat and species considerations around time of construction, prior to ground disturbing activities, how much impact would be considered of different species, different timelines on nesting. And I just wanted to make a comment that I had had a lot of questions. I don't want people to think I wasn't thinking these things through, but I did find that a number of those points were addressed in the report. And because it was this fact, I needed a reminder of what page to find that on. And I'm just stating it now for the public, really, because I don't think the public had the benefit of a 775-page packet to double-check. So that was one thing I had. And then I do have concerns about the tree and some observations on that. It seemed like Mayor Martin had some concerns about trees.
I'm sorry, I want to make clear, this is the opportunity to ask questions of the appellant or the applicant. Not... You can still ask questions of staff after we close the public hearing, and you will still have an opportunity to make comments and points, just as you're making now. But in terms of process, we really need to close the public hearing if we have no further questions for the applicant specifically or the appellant.
Okay, I thought the mayor had closed the public hearing. Did I miss that?
I did say that, yes. Do you want me to make more of a declarative statement, City Manager?
No, that's fine. If the public hearing is closed, then we should take the appellant and the applicant off of the Zoom call. Or off of the...
Okay, so just for clarification, like, close the public hearing and...
And we should bring it back to staff, and staff may have some comments that they want to make over comments that they heard during the public hearing.
Thank you, Michelle. Madam Mayor, if you'd indulge for just a moment, there were a number of points the council might find helpful or the community might find informative, if I could touch on them briefly. There were numerous concerns about the adequacy of the cumulative impacts analysis, easterly lots versus westerly lots. We go over that in great detail in the ISMND. And as I explained earlier, the rationale, which was based on reasonable assumptions, based on facts, was to limit that to areas connected to the street and utilities extension. There's no other evidence that's been given for a rational basis to make any other conclusion at this point. There were concerns about the adequacy of the biological assessment, which Mr. Papani and others have touched on already. There are concerns about the road condition and traffic impacts and the relationship to construction. As has been noted, the Planning Commission did impose a requirement for project impacts to the street to be addressed with a pre-construction photographic survey of Rockaway Beach Avenue all the way to Highway 1, and a post-construction survey of the same area, and repair of any direct damage caused by project vehicles. And so that does address the project's impacts to Rockaway Beach Avenue. It will not, however, provide a basis for the applicant completely reconstructing the street, which is ultimately the city's responsibility to correct that zero pavement condition index condition that Councilmember O'Neill alluded to. But the direct damage from this project will be addressed by the condition of approval. With respect to traffic impacts, the reason that the city did not include a 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM construction hour limitation is because we did not find any evidence of traffic impacts from the traffic impact analysis. And so we did not have any evidentiary basis to impose that as a mitigation measure through the SEQA process, because there were no environmental impacts to traffic to mitigate, even at the worst-case level of service or LOSF. There may be other bases for the council to impose that requirement, but we did not have evidence in the environmental process to restrict the hours further than those allowed by the city's standard construction hours ordinance, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and nine to five on the weekends. With respect to wildfire evacuation impacts, as has been noted, the area has a narrow street. It does not meet current fire code standards, but that's an existing condition of the baseline. It's not caused by this project. The threshold for evaluation in SEQA, in this case, is whether this project would conflict with an approved evacuation plan. It does not. And the traffic attributable to an evacuation from this project of one single-family residence, or even up to five in totality with the western lots, would not have a significant impact on the ability to evacuate. And so there was no direct project basis for us to address that. With respect to landslides and residents being blocked, I don't understand what evidence there is that this project would cause that. Otherwise, it's an existing condition that could happen unrelated to this project. We've touched on hydrology and creek flooding. The project applicant has done the analysis, and the city has reviewed it. The calculations check out, and the post-project stormwater runoff would be less than the pre-project runoff. And so it's not clear what evidence there is, if any, of potential impacts to flooding or creek stability. Natural springs underground on the project site, it's been analyzed and explained in this hearing. There's no evidence of underground springs related to the project area. Whatever other surface runoff from underground springs or other sources that exist elsewhere in the neighborhood, it's not related to this project site or its impacts. And that's another existing condition that could be addressed by the city, but is not an obligation of this applicant to address. Last couple of points. There was a statement that this house is infinitely larger than anything built in recent years, and that somehow would cause environmental impacts. This house would be the largest in Rockaway Beach, but when you compare it to its lot size, it would be one of the smallest. Out of the 116 developed parcels, it would be tied for ninth lowest-floor area ratio, even though it would be a large home compared to others built in the neighborhood. So it's helpful to put that in perspective, that this is not a large house for... So it's helpful to put that in perspective, that this is not a large house for the site on which it's proposed. With respect to statements made again about homes proposed east of this, there are no applications pending with the city for any of the easterly lots or lots beyond that to the east. There are only application, there's only one application pending for the westerly lots for three different lots among the westerly lots. And then lastly, we touched on a specific plan and how it could be an appropriate mechanism for improving some of these degraded baseline conditions. But it's not the obligation of this project applicant to remedy and rectify all of the existing conditions in the neighborhood. Mr. Papani, anything further on the CEQA analysis?
Thank you, Christian. I, I, I think I would only add that with respect to cumulative impacts, I think what's typically an important distinction is the fact that we must look at the project's incremental contribution. And if it can be shown that the project's incremental contribution is what CEQA calls less than cumulatively considerable, then we can determine that its portion of a cumulative impact can be less than significant. That doesn't mean it has some, it doesn't have some level of contribution when you combine it with other development. But we still need to look at what's its incremental contribution. And we believe with the mitigations imposed, that this contribution would be less than cumulatively considerable. And that's why we reached the conclusions we did. I think that's all. Thank you.
Are we ready to talk about items? Okay, there were actually three environmental studies done, not one or two, because the one proposed was peer-reviewed. So there were three. So one person says there's more animals than the other one. How do you know who was right? Because there were three. So you'd have to go with the two over the one. The specific plan, if the people in Rockaway want a specific plan, the people in Pedro Point want a specific plan, the people who are in Valamar want a specific plan, and maybe Park Pacifica does, or Lindemar. Where does that lead us? We can't, we don't, we can't, we can't keep doing specific plans for neighborhoods because it just doesn't work. It's an extremely expensive, time-consuming, long project. And the reason that we did one in Sharp Park is because we own a lot of property in Sharp Park. And we're trying to decide what happens with that property along with the rest of Sharp Park, which was at one point supposed to be our downtown. So that's the reason we did one in Sharp Park, not for each and every neighborhood. These, I went, either I was on planning or I went to the Planning Commission meeting where they brought up the two houses in the very beginning. And like they said, they brought in two side-by-side houses on 15,000-square-foot lots. This is such a huge improvement. They've gone over and above what's required of them. And that's the job of planning. The job of planning is to make sure that this project meets all of our requirements, not to change all of our requirements at the last minute because there's one house. And back to that point, there's one house. There are no other houses. There's one. So how can you say that they should do all this extra? Because somebody might build a house tomorrow. Well, somebody might build on the other side. Like Mike said, there are lots of paper streets in there and somebody could build someday. But that's not how it is now. And the street, the street width, if you look on a map for the street width of Rockaway, which this barely even crosses before you turn off to go onto their street, has been encroached on for so many years by the people who own properties on either side. They grow plants, they put parking. There's a lot of encroachment on that, on that street. If it was a two-lane street, it would make things a lot easier for people. But does that mean that they're going to have to go back and do surveys and remove where they've encroached upon the street over years and years and years? I think this is one house. I think it fits perfectly in the neighborhood. I can't say whether anybody else is going to build there. They are going to do plans. They specifically talk about nesting and the trees and what they're going to do about the wildlife that's in there. They are now only removing, they're removing three heritage trees. So if they have to put in nine additional trees, I don't see that as an issue. But most of the trees, they said, were under six inches. I, I read every single detail in here. And like I said, I had a full page of questions, but my full page of questions was basically answered. And I, I think seven years to try to build one house, the time, the amount of money, the amount of time, again, because it's a massive amount of time that they have spent trying to build this one house. And I would, I would vote to deny the appeal. That's it.
Anyone else want to talk? Mike, Mary, Sue?
Okay, I'll go. Thank you, Councilmember Vatolos, for, for all that information. I appreciate it. I really do. There are a couple of things that I, I think could be done in addition. So I, I would really like to see a, a plan for the trees. So that's one. I think that the work hours should, should be changed, just at least to just do, do, like, do work during the week and, like, leave the weekends off of that. So maybe like eight to six during the week. We talked about the streetlights. And I know Councilmember O'Neill mentioned something about deed restrictions. I think there's some things that I, I would like to, to see added. And then I would approve the project.
What are, what are the, what are they?
I just said them.
So you, those deed restrictions?
Oh, I, yeah, Councilmember O'Neill said something about the deed restrictions, so maybe he can elaborate on that. I would definitely like a plan for the trees and the work hours reduced to just weekday. No weekends.
Madam Mayor, if I could offer a couple of observations on the items listed by Councilmember Beer. With respect to the, the streetlight situation, I think as Deputy Director Batista identified, we don't believe there's likely to be glare. But it's impossible to know every angle, especially with the topography in this area. And so addressing that with a shield of some sort, if glare somehow unforeseeably did become an issue, is still within the city engineer's ability and authority. The applicant, in fact, has no control over the streetlights. They're simply required to pay for the installation of a streetlight because of the street extension. And so I think you could entrust the city staff to address that issue in response to the neighborhood if it does present a problem. With respect to the lot merger, as I noted in the staff report, written and verbal presentation, these lots have already been merged. That merger has been recorded with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office. And there's only one lot that exists today. There is no ability to legally sell any of the former lots, four through 12. They consisted of a single lot that could only be divided through a public process involving a public hearing, notifying people in the area in order to divide that property further. And so it's not clear what benefit or ability to impose a deed restriction of some sort would yield when that's already been accomplished. And then with respect to the trees, keep in mind, the heritage trees being removed for this project are within the public right-of-way. And so if we're trying to find a nexus to the project and mitigating impacts of that removal, likely it would result in requiring that replanting within the public right-of-way to offset those impacts. And so with that in mind, it may be helpful to hear from the Public Works Department in understanding what their considerations are for street tree maintenance, because it would become the city's obligation and burden to maintain those trees. And if it's a one-to-one replacement or a three-to-one replacement, that drastically affects the maintenance burden as well that may be placed on the city. So perhaps we could provide Deputy Director Batista or Director Peterson an opportunity to comment before imposing such a requirement.
Yes, thank you, Lisa Peterson, Public Works Director. Yeah, so obviously, when we have constrained right-of-way and we have a situation where we're doing tree replacements, if we're taking out one tree, we're trying to put in three trees in a constrained right-of-way situation, ultimately that is going to, you know, probably causes some issues regarding our infrastructure. You know, I, I, I would definitely be concerned about, you know, putting too many trees in a constrained area. You know, certainly a one-to-one replacement would be something that should be feasible or, you know, perhaps there could be another location found for those trees. But you've already heard a lot of the residents talking about the narrowness of the street. And so, of course, we don't want to exacerbate that in any way.
Thank you, Director Peterson. And a final point from me on the trees is that there isn't mitigation measure to require the applicant to have approval of a tree protection plan. The significant portion of that is already in the record with a tree protection plan that the Planning Commission looked at. But it is within the council's discretion to ensure that that replanting, preferably, as Director Peterson said, at a one-to-one ratio in the right-of-way, to explicitly put that in the condition of approval to ensure that that mitigation measure for the tree protection plan does include that. That's perfectly reasonable to do.
Christian, I was on the Planning Commission. And back in the 80s, we took and the city merged lots that were all in common ownership. Okay, so you created this, creating a standard-sized lot from several, you know, substandard lots. But then we adopted a policy that people could then, if they wanted to subdivide them, they had to come in with total plan. Now, I'm not accusing at all the applicant of wanting to do this. But they could, there would be 5,000-square-foot standard lot left on this property, correct? That could be subdivided.
So I think that's not clear. The city has subdivision standards in Title 10 of the municipal code. If the applicant in some fashion wanted to subdivide this property, in addition to the process of requiring a public hearing to obtain city approval and potentially requiring CEQA analysis as part of that process as a discretionary action, the subdivision would be subject to the standards for subdivision that have minimum lot sizes based on the slope of the site. This is a rather steep slope site, and it would require a correspondingly large lot size, certainly well above 5,000 square feet. And so I don't have the, the analysis to support what the minimum lot size would be, but I know for sure it would be well above 5,000 square feet.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. So I would withdraw that, that issue from my perspective. You're basically hillside preservation kind of thing? Is that what you're talking?
The standard is related to steeper sites needing larger lot sizes to offset the development challenges and presumably aesthetic impacts from chopping up hillsides and retaining walls and the like.
Sue Beckmeyer? Is there anything?
My concern was with trees. And my, after hearing Director Peterson discussing the one-to-one ratio for replacement for street trees or trees in the public right-of-way, I would be satisfied with that for the heritage trees that are going to need to be removed for the roadway. And I did want to point out that I think there were over 20 heritage trees that were identified on this, on this entire property. Originally, eight of them were slated to be removed. And the concession and the agreement was made to keep five of those. And the only ones that are needing to be removed are the three that are in the public right-of-way. So that means all the rest of them that are currently on that property are staying, which I appreciate very much. And, and I think that will help continue the general character of that area. So that is my only comment on trees.
I have a statement on the timing and only allowing people to work from eight to six. It will extend the time period that they're building. And people are going to have to deal with it a lot longer because they won't have those two extra days. And also, we have it in our regulations what the building times are. So if we're changing the regulations, which we can do, then is every person who comes before planning, who doesn't want their neighbor to build on the weekend when they're home, is going to put in an appeal and say, oh, look, they did this in Rockway. I think they should do it by my house, too. So I just don't want people building on the weekend. So I think that it could be a point of contention for a lot of people. But this is what we have in the planning guidelines right now. And they were willing to come down because it says seven to seven and nine to five, I believe, on the weekends. So they were willing to reduce some of that time period.
I think, I think Sue has a good point in terms of lengthening the time. But you are going to be getting into rainy season, hopefully rainy season, pretty soon, because I would imagine their construction is not going to start much before late September, early October. And then you're going to be into rainy season, which delays them even more, trying to do grading where you could have issues of slides and stuff like that because they haven't been able to finish it. So.
There is a grading time period also. There is a set time where you cannot grade your property. Christian can tell you exactly.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that residential code actually exempts single-family residences from that prohibition. And so barring some other exclusion in the project approval, if the project is approved, this project would be allowed to proceed. However, with every project, it does have to have an approved stormwater management plan. And this project would be required to provide appropriate site protection measures so that the creek is not affected by polluted runoff, if you will, from soil and other construction materials entering the creek.
Thank you for correcting me. Appreciate it.
So I sort of said everything I had to say. It doesn't, I, I didn't feel like there's much support for requiring an EIR. I think that majority of, of council thinks that what has been done is enough. I, I don't agree with that fully, but I'm not gonna go down that path. So the only thing that I really feel like any concessions should be made would be on the work hours and the trees. And I do think that if you take down one heritage tree, you should plant three. We have Arbor Day coming up, so it's perfect timing. If they want to donate trees for Arbor Day, we will find places for them. So that's, that's kind of really, I'd like to see some concessions. I, I don't, I don't want to. You know, I'd like to see these folks be able to build their home. But I, I feel like there are some concessions that I'd like, and I'm not hearing them.
I'm, I'm okay with the, the tree thing of tear down one, you know, replace them with three somewhere more appropriate. Frontierland Park or wherever. Not necessarily right there.
I, I, I think it's important that the council's going to need to remember that when you're imposing conditions, that you need to make sure that there is a nexus between the condition that you are imposing and the. that there is a nexus between the condition that you are imposing and the burden of the project. So I think what Planner Murdock was suggesting is, you know, one-for-one replacement, which would, you know, clearly be appropriate. I'm not sure that the burden of removing one tree requires replacing three with three.
But it's a heritage tree. You know, for tree, as a designated tree city USA, I think there might be more interest in something like that. And I don't think it's, it's not, you know, it's not like we're, they're not expensive.
I actually don't think it's prohibitive to ask that, to donate additional trees, probably not near the public right-of-way because we don't, as a city, we would have to maintain them. And I think it's fine to donate them to Arbor Day. And there's no regulations as far as I believe on the size of the replacement tree.
I just want to say it's quarter to 11:00. So.
Morning.
Pardon?
A lot of stuff to get through this evening.
Yeah, so.
So I moved that we go till 12:30. You think that's long enough?
I was thinking more, and Michelle would, I've never seen this happen, never done this. Could we postpone one item and just finish the other three? Get them off the plate and postpone the other item to a date certain? The major item?
Well, we should finish this item and then have that discussion about what you would like to postpone. Because I think, the answer is, the short answer is, yes, I think you can do that. But I think first we should conclude this discussion. And I think where we were at is what is the condition of approval that, is there a majority of the council that wants to revise condition? I believe it's condition 16. And Mr. Murdock, maybe you can help me out here? That relates to replacement of heritage tree removal. And so if there is a majority of the council that wants a revision to that condition of approval, we should probably discuss that now before there is a, you know, motion on the floor. Because if there is a consensus of a majority of the council to do that, then we should clear that up before a motion is made.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. On packet page 163, there is condition of approval number 16. It reads, "Applicants shall incorporate all recommendations contained in the tree protection plan, included as Exhibit C to this resolution into construction of the project." And this condition of approval is meant to accompany the authorization for heritage tree removal by ensuring protection of all the other trees that are remaining, including heritage trees on the project site. And so what I was suggesting, if the council wants to specify some scheme for replacement of the trees to amend this condition number 16 to require an amendment to the tree protection plan. So it specifies the replacement ratio or locations or other feature of that tree replacement that the council sees fit. Currently, the tree protection plan does not have a mandated tree replacement requirement. And so this would be an opportune place to include that if the council sees fit.
And do you have language, Mr. Murdock, that they could consider?
Well, I would suggest modifying condition number 16, something to the effect of adding a sentence that says, "Prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall revise the tree protection plan to include a replacement ratio of X for heritage trees removed within the public right-of-way to the satisfaction of the planning director." What that ratio is, I've not heard consensus among the council at this point.
Three per one heritage tree.
Can I just, how many would support three to one replacement? Okay, four to one. Okay, so that's done, all right. So then the other conditions.
Work hours.
Pardon?
Work hours.
The work hours. The standard is, Christian, please help me. What's the standard time that's in our code?
So the code allows 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And I believe it's 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday.
So seven to seven, nine to five on Saturday. Does anybody support that? Okay, is that seeing zero? Then just kind of, you know, eight to six, Monday through Friday, nine to four on Saturday? Okay. Mary, do you have an idea?
I'll do the nine to four on Saturday.
Okay. Georgia?
I'm in the minority, so.
Okay, so Saturday, nine to four. What about Monday through Friday?
It was eight to six, I think.
Eight to six? Is that yea or nay from anybody? Okay, eight to five?
Eight to six, sorry.
You support eight to six? Do I hear the second one? No, I feel like an auctioneer here. Eight to five? Five, Monday through Friday?
Yeah.
We hear eight to five?
Yeah, eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Eight to five, Monday through Friday. Mary, I heard took that as a yes. Sue?
Which, Sue?
I'll accept that.
Okay, so we have consensus on eight to five. And then what was it, nine to four on Saturdays? Okay.
No Sunday.
Huh?
It's in our codes, Sunday.
Yeah, no Sundays, okay.
Oh, no. It's in the code, they can work on Sunday.
Oh.
They're just happy for a little quiet in their neighborhoods, that's all.
On a valley like that, I think it could reverberate, reverberate, you know? I mean, because I do know they've been impacted by some of the airport noise because it bounces off the hills. So.
Sue, it's because of the configuration of the neighborhood, the topography and the way that neighborhood is shaped is why I was going for one day without construction. And then noise.
Okay, so no construction on Sunday. Is there consensus?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes. Four to one on that, so, okay. So is there anything else we wanted to talk about in the conditions? Okay, so change the conditions that we just talked about. Christian, do you have those?
I heard modifying condition number 16 to add a sentence, "Prior to issuance of a building permit, applicants shall revise the tree protection plan to require a three-to-one replacement of heritage trees in the public right-of-way to the satisfaction of the planning director." And I could add a condition of approval. I'm not sure that we have one on point at this time because we were relying on the municipal code. Construction hours shall be eight to five, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturday, and construction prohibited on Sunday.
Okay. So then we did, do we have a motion? No motion?
Everybody's gonna make a motion?
I have to find it on the page. Or Sue has them in front of her, right? Mine are in the computer.
Me, Sue Beckmeyer?
Yep.
The recommended action on the agenda is move to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's adoption of the initial study, negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program and approval of a site development permit, heritage tree removal authorization and logging operation approval by adopting the resolution as amended with two conditions of approval as reflected by Planner Christian Murdock, included as attachment A.
So moved.
So before we vote, I just, for the record.
We need a second before there's discussion on the motion.
Oh, that's funny. You're making the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, so motion by Votolos, seconded by O'Neil. Quick discussion is my requests for additional hydrology, additional environmental impact. Obviously, we're not flying this evening. So I feel that this family deserves to build their home and I think they made an appropriate amount of concessions. However, I would have liked to have seen the city, you know, really request an EIR. So with those notes in the record and the additional concessions that we're making this evening, I will be denying the appeal.
Okay. Take a vote.
Yeah, can we call for a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, because it's five minutes to 11:00.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Votolos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And the vote, this item passes with a vote of five to zero as moved with the conditions of approval.
So it's 10:54. I think we need to have a discussion on how late do we want to go with the rest of the agenda?
Yeah, we do.
Because I think we have one really big issue.
Yeah.
Three kind of smaller ones. This is my opinion, okay? I'm not making a motion, whatever. But I don't think that public policy, I mean, we're kind of rummy on this now. I don't think good public policy's made at one in the morning, 1:30. That's my opinion, so.
I agree. And I also don't think that we would be able to give the attention that it deserves to item number 11. So I would suggest that we do the other ones. Is it item 11? Yeah, I just suggest doing 12 and 13, but not 11 tonight. If we can push that.
And for the, for the council members' information related to the discussion, so there's the item 11 regarding oversized vehicles. There's the nuisance ordinance related to beekeeping. And then there's the Beach Boulevard Park and Plaza. Actually, unless any of the department directors want to chime in, from my information, none of those is really time-sensitive or urgent. But I would like to point out, you know, right now, they are in the near future. But I would like to point out that, you know, at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, there's another big appeal hearing. And there's other items that get backlogged as well. So just for the information for the discussion, timing-wise, unless any of the other department directors chime in, there's not urgency about making the decisions tonight. But perhaps at the next meeting or the meeting after that, and we'd have to, or perhaps scheduling a separate additional special council meeting to tackle some of these issues.
Or we could actually start it, let's say, six instead of seven.
Yeah, you could take a regular meeting and turn it into a special meeting and start earlier. Exactly.
Okay, is there a?
It seems like 12, we've gone over it so many times that it seems like that one should be fairly quick, depending on the.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree, too.
Are we talking the beekeeping?
Yeah.
I think we need to, it's 10:59. I make a motion, we go until 11:30?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Votolos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero to go to 11:30.
Okay, are we able to have a discussion right now about any one of these items to be pushed to a future council meeting?
I would recommend, I don't know if it's item 11 or 12 officially now because of the consent agenda. But the issue regarding the RVs, I would push that to another council meeting later in the year and move forward with 12 and 13.
Yes, I second that.
Okay, so that's a motion and a second. Can we have a vote?
So to push original agenda item number 11 to a future meeting and proceed with items 12 and 13, moved by O'Neil, seconded by Beer, roll call vote. Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Votolos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero.
And I promise the staff presentations for original items 12 and 13 will be brief.
Okay, we will move on. Two. Item number 12. Considered option of resolution to amend City Administrative Policy Number 35, standard related to keeping of animals and introduction and ordinance amending Section 5-25.03 Public Nuisance Conditions in 6-01.102 permits required of the Civica Municipal Code relating to the keeping of bees and finding the adoption of the resolution and introduction of ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
All right, good evening, councilmembers, or good night. My name is Helen Gannon, Assistant Planner. And the item before you is to consider revisions to the municipal code to allow beekeeping without requiring a permit and establishing nuisance provisions related to beekeeping. On February 10th of this year, the council received a staff report that presented different options for regulating beekeeping and heard from members of the public. After receiving public comment and discussion of the regulations, council directed city staff to remove permit and other regulatory requirements under Administrative Policy Number 35 and to address any potential isolated issues that may arise as a result of beekeeping via the city's nuisance abatement procedures. As such, the resolution attached to the staff report would rescind general standard section number four within Administrative Policy Number 35 relating to honeybees. Secondly, the attached ordinance would propose to delete subsection D of Section 6-1.102 of the municipal code, which requires that the city council adopt administrative policies related to fees and permits for honeybees. Lastly, the proposed ordinance would include a new specific nuisance condition relating to beekeeping under Section 5-25.03 to allow regulatory enforcement through the city's nuisance abatement procedures. In conclusion, there are two motions that staff recommends council make tonight. The first is to move to adopt a resolution amending City Administrative Policy Number 35 by deleting general standard section number four regarding the keeping of honeybees and find adoption of the resolution exempt from the provisions of SEQA. Secondly, move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance of the city council amending Section 5-25.03 Public Nuisance Conditions of Chapter 25 within Title V and Section 6-1.102 permits required of Chapter 1 within Title VI of the municipal code relating to keeping of bees and find that the ordinance is also exempt from the provisions of SEQA. That concludes my short presentation and I'm here for any questions you may have.
No questions, Julie?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, how about?
No questions.
Let's see, we have, okay, any members of the public? We've got two, three hands up. We've got two, three hands up. Got two hands up, so. Three minutes.
Our first speaker is Tiger Jazz Big Stick.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Tiger Jazz Trolls Big Stick of Pacifica. Since it's rather late and that was a rather draining session, I'm going to take a liberty and try and lighten the mood for a brief moment because I remember when I, when the last time we were discussing bees and I was reading the staff report, I was sitting at this time at the Pedro Point Brewery just with a beer and some popcorn because it was a light item. And I was looking forward to our fine folks in Pacifica having the ability, if they so choose, to keep bees, to be able to provide themselves and presumably others honey. And more importantly, to be able to start helping the proliferation of our pollinators and thereby help our environment in kind of a rather sweet neighborhood way. Sweet, pun intended. So I look forward to fine institutions such as a Pedro Point Brewery being open again so that, again, when things are a little lighter, I can enjoy steady time in a lightened atmosphere and amongst good folks in our community. And all that being said, I really appreciate that the city has put the work in to put this together. And I think that it's good for not just Pacifica, but the environment, which means probably something a little bit more than Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Erin Macias.
Good evening, council and staff. I am Erin Macias of Lindemar and a member of Bee Legal Pacifica. I suspect the rest of my beekeepers are asleep, as are my bees tonight. I may be the only speaker from our group. So on behalf of Bee Legal, I want to express my deepest gratitude to each of you for taking the time to respond to our emails, to take the time to learn about the benefits of beekeeping in our coastal community, and to evaluate how the existing regulations created barriers to helping our pollinators support the city of Pacifica's biodiversity. The collaboration between staff and volunteers demonstrates the successful partnership between citizens and their elected to foster an environment of peaceful coexistence between humans and nature. We fully support the changes as proposed. Thank you.
See any other hands raised? Bring it back to council. Anyone have anything?
Can I make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to adopt a resolution amending city administrative policy number thirty-five by deleting general standard section number four regarding the keeping of honeybees and find adoption to the resolution exempt from the provisions of SEQA under sections one five zero six one B three of the SEQA guidelines. And we do it all in one, right?
I think we can.
And move waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance of the city council amending section five twenty-five oh three, public nuisance condition of chapter twenty-five within title five and section six dash one one oh two permits required of chapter one within title six of the municipal code relating to the keeping of bees and find the ordinance is exempt from the provisions of SEQA under section one five zero six one B three of the SEQA guidelines.
And I'll second.
And I just want to say before we take a vote that I am super stoked about this. It has been a long time coming, and I have ordered the wood for my bee platforms already.
I think this was, I know we, at the time, this was a super simple thing because all of us are in total agreement that we need the bees and we need the beekeepers, and we love the honey, and we thank all of them for what they do.
I'd like to say that I think this is an example. When I found out we were one of four cities in San Diego County that didn't allow this, I felt like that was an example of code ordinance deferred maintenance, maybe. I don't think there was, in recent times, an absolute frustration or anger against bees. And I'm glad that we were able to correct this and make it right to include Pacifica in, with all the other cities in the county that support beekeeping.
I agree with everybody else. Have a vote.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Here.
Sorry, Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaterlas.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yeah.
And item number twelve passes with a vote of five to zero.
Okay. All right, so our last item is item number thirteen. Consideration: Approval of the concept plan for the public plaza along the Boulevard and recommendation for construction phase sequencing with the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project, New Future Seawall. The staff report?
Yes, I believe that Public Works will be presenting this item. While we're waiting.
And wake up.
What's that?
And wake up.
While we're waiting, I will kick off then just off the top of my head regarding this project. This was a major council project on last year's fiscal year work plan to really revitalize the Beach Boulevard Park area, which is just sort of uncounted sand currently and some battered, you know, seaside furniture, and revitalize it into an area that will be a great attraction and congregating place for the public. And so a process was initiated to go through the design and went to, I believe, the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission twice. And then, before it went back the second time coronavirus hit, so the project review was delayed. The project also did a significant amount of public engagement in.
I'm sorry, there's some flying, good stuff happening there. All right, so along with the sculptures, there are a couple of fitness stations. And we're not talking anything fancy that has moving parts or that's going to rust or be damaged by the wind, sand and and water. It's more, you know, basic, either galvanized or even some type of wood that you would do just really easy body weight movements along kind of the coastal trail. Could be a little stopping point, get your workout in and move on. There's also the yellow. I think if you click next, that should fly in, is an option. There you go. Sand volleyball, that was real big by the Parks, Beach and Recreation Commission to have kind of a low-key sand volleyball court if people wanted to to partake. Next slide. So here are the sea creatures that we would be proposing. That would be concrete kind of pool sculptures. Like I said, they're they're pretty big and bigger, larger than life, so.
Melanie, I just have a question that.
Yeah.
The sand volleyball court.
Yeah.
Will that be fenced in so that cats and dogs don't, you know, use it?
No, because it's it's nothing more than literally two, like sleeves where posts could go, and then you make your own. So it's no different than the sand around it.
Okay.
Is, are there barbecue pits there or barbecue? Yes. There's barbecue in the the new one that's planned left. And then there's a couple existing ones that we will replace. But so these are the the concrete structures that will be, you know, throughout the sand that kind of provides some some visual interest and also some activity on the site for kids and adults alike. And then I think I'm going to kick it back to Lauren.
Okay, thanks, Melanie. Let's see, next slide, please. Next slide, please. Yes, that one. So currently underway is the planning and feasibility phase for the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project. And it will most likely have a direct impact to the Beach Boulevard Plaza project that we just presented. One of the impacts would be the need to raise the existing seawall to a height of about six feet minimum, which is the elevation cited to combat sea level rise. And it will have a domino effect on the Beach Boulevard project. For instance, if the height of the existing seawall is raised, say, a minimum of six feet, the adjacent promenade sidewalk will also need to be raised, which in effect will create a need for the Beach Boulevard Plaza project area to be raised as well. And what this means is that any hardscaped areas that would have been constructed with the Beach Boulevard Plaza project will need to be demolished and reconstructed once again, you know, following the new seawall installation. And.